The following program is underwritten by the generous support of Associates of Glens Falls and Lumison LePan Insurance. Since 1852, they have been assisting both businesses and individuals across the country secure the most comprehensive insurance products available. Associates of Glens Falls is proud to partner with central insurance companies. Public Affairs Programming on Look TV is underwritten by the generous support of Pinellas Restaurant, classic Italian-American food since 1922, and StorTech, technology solutions for computers, networks, and phone. StorTech, your technology, our passion.
1922, Babe Ruth debuts with the Yankees, WGY signs on air, Exterminator wins the Saratoga Cup, and Pinellas Restaurant opens its doors for the very first time. For five generations, Pinellas has been preparing delicious Italian food, served in a comfortable home-like setting where everyone is welcome. Ninety years of authentic Italian recipes, ninety years of the freshest ingredients, and ninety years of the finest classic Italian dishes, all made daily by hand. Pinellas Italian Restaurant, a Saratoga dining tradition since 1922.
Most cybersecurity firms deal only with prevention, the systems that block hackers and viruses. Stored Tech knows the root cause is actually good people doing bad things. So we offer a security training program which includes certifying all participants to show they understand the basics.
Technology solutions for computers, networks, and phones.
... and commitment to service in our community here in Warren and Washington County. I cannot begin, as many of you know, I send a lot of emails or texts or phone calls, and Sam Parker answered every single one of them. Between Sam Hall and I and our advocacy, I think was probably the way we'll say that, Sam was a professional day in and day out. We are lucky to have him representing our community, and because of his efforts, we had more resources and time and energy and efforts to focus on Warren County as well and Washington County, on their counties with their public health departments. This was an excellent partnership, and at this point in time, I would ask our county administrator to formally recognize your efforts. And again, Sam, we can't thank you enough.
I echo everything the chairwoman said, and I would, if you would indulge me, I would like to take the time to actually read this proclamation because the recognition is certainly very well deserved. Whereas the COVID pandemic brought forth impacts to health and safety the likes of which this region had never before experienced, bringing life as we knew it to a standstill and causing the closure of municipal buildings, schools, and businesses. And whereas when vaccines were developed and made available, they served as a beacon of hope and a means for returning to some sort of normalcy but were difficult to obtain in the North Country regardless of the strong desire by residents to become vaccinated. And whereas Sam Parker, as the Capital Region Representative for the Office of the Governor of the State of New York, assisted in sourcing vaccine doses for distribution in Warren and Washington Counties during the early days of the pandemic when the vaccine was in high demand, including helping us to obtain 1,170 Pfizer doses for a clinic we hosted jointly on March 6th and 7th, 2021. And whereas Mr. Parker began working with county officials in mid-January of 2021 in an effort to establish a mass vaccination clinic, which resulted through a collaborative effort and with the support of Chairwoman Seaver of the Warren County Board of Supervisors and Chairman Hall of the Washington County Board of Supervisors, when a regional mass vaccination clinic was opened in the town of Queensberry at the Aviation Mall on March 19th, 2021. And whereas the ultimate opening of the mass vaccination clinic, although delayed and challenged due to factors out of his and our control, is a testament to Mr. Parker's personal and persistent advocacy on behalf of our region. And whereas, in addition to the establishment of the mass vaccination site, Mr. Parker's assistance during the COVID pandemic extended to all things vaccine-related, serving as a resource for information and an advocate for both Warren and Washington Counties' concerns every step of the way. And whereas Mr. Parker has been a helpful resource on other COVID-related issues to Warren and Washington County officials since assuming his position in March of 2020, especially to the county administrators, the chairs of the boards, and the directors of public health. And whereas Mr. Parker is highly respected, and we consider him to be a valued partner and a friend to both Warren and Washington Counties. Now therefore be it resolved that the Warren and Washington County Boards of Supervisors join with their residents in extending sincere gratitude and appreciation to Sam Parker for the immeasurable impact he's made through his expertise and leadership in enabling the vaccination of residents not only in Warren and Washington Counties but in surrounding communities as well, which effectively allowed the region to reopen and return to a state of normalcy. Dated August 20th, 2021 and signed by Rachel E. Seaver, Chairwoman, Warren County Board of Supervisors, and Samuel J. Hall, Chairman, Washington County Board of Supervisors. Sam, we can't thank you enough, and thank you for being here and all you've done for
At this point in time, we have another amazing presentation recognizing our Employee of the Month, and I would ask that our Personnel Chair, Supervisor Braemer, along with our county administrator Moore, present our Employee of the Month for office, please.
We're very proud to announce the Employee of the Month. This month is from the Employment and Training Department, was nominated by our Director, Liza Oxendorf, and I'd like to, without objection, ask Liza to come up to the podium to introduce the recipient.
Good to see all of you. I'm delighted to be here today to recognize an exceptional person in our Employment and Training Administration. Gail Minder has served as an Employment and Training Counselor for the last four and a half years by helping Warren County residents with a variety of employment needs. Gail meets people where they are, shows compassion and understanding, and helps each person identify their strengths and barriers in obtaining or retaining a job. Where Gail really shines, though, is in her classes and workshops. Aside from teaching job readiness skills to social services applicants and more recently to SUNY Adirondack Web Development students, the pandemic has pivoted Gail to also teach virtual workshops. Over the last ten months, Gail has taught 22 online workshops to hundreds of people to help them get back to work during the pandemic. These workshops are not only attended by Warren County residents or Capital Region residents, but she now has participants logging in from New York City to Buffalo. In yesterday's class, she had 49 participants from across the state. One of the most popular workshops entitled Transferable Skills addresses the critical topic as people transition changing careers during the pandemic. Gail helps job seekers identify all of their technical and professional skills from previous experience and translate it to be applicable in their new career of choice so they know how to market themselves. Whether in a classroom or through a computer camera, Gail connects with her audience in a way that is engaging, empowering, and enlightening. She is someone who is dependable, adaptable, and passionate about providing excellent customer service, and we can be proud that she's representing Warren County as she helps people near and far in our great state of New York.
One of Gail's efforts and under the leadership of Liza in our Employment and Training Office, we have been able to offer a leadership program to not only our department heads but to our senior-level supervisors that continue to show professionalism, experience, and of course, now incredible enhanced leadership skill sets. And that is coming from a volunteer program that our department heads have signed up for to learn more about handling difficult situations or leading during crisis. And so this month, we'd like to recognize four employees who took this additional training, and it's very time-intensive, and certified under our Employment and Training Office at absolutely no additional cost to the county, which we're very happy for, but to provide that skill set, stackable credential, and experience to our employees, we're very grateful for that. So thank you to Employment and Training for your hard work developing this this month, and we will have these individuals recognized during their committee meetings. But we'd like to congratulate Tammy DeLorenzo, congratulations on finishing the leadership badge, along with Carla Kernan in our Auditor's Office, Janelle Jones, Head of Public Health, and Julie Butler, who runs our Purchasing Department. So we'll be recognizing you during your committee meetings and providing you with a certificate of appreciation as well. So if we could just do a round of applause for those four department heads. At this point in time, I'd like to declare a public hearing open on our proposed Local Law Number 6 of 2021, entitled A Local Law Amending and Updating Local Law Number 5 of 2021, a Local Law Amending and Updating Local Law Number 6 of 2014, Warren County Ethics and Disclosure Law. At this point in time, I'd ask our Deputy Clerk to please read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Warren, New York, is considering adoption of a proposed Local Law Number 6 for the year 2021, entitled A Local Law Amending and Updating Local Law Number 5 of 2021, a Local Law Amending and Updating Local Law Number 6 of 2014, Warren County Ethics and Disclosure Law. The purpose of the local law is to revise and update the ethics and disclosure law for Warren County in accordance with the provisions of Article 18 of the General Municipal Law. If adopted, Local Law Number 6 of 2021 will supersede Warren County Local Law Number 5 of 2021, which amended and superseded the ethical principles and standards set forth by Local Law Number 6 of 2014, to be filed by certain covered persons, including Warren County's elected and appointed officials, if officers, and certain employees in policymaking positions or who have discretionary authority and instituted requirements regarding the disclosure of certain interests as defined in the local law in accordance with the required annual filing of written disclosure statements. Notice is further given that pursuant to Resolution Number 298 of 2021, adopted by the Warren County Board of Supervisors on July 16th, 2021, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Supervisors at the Supervisors' Room located in the Warren County Municipal Center, 1340 State Route 9, Pittsburgh, New York, on August 20th, 2021, at 10:00 a.m., at which time and place all persons interested in the matter of such proposed Local Law Number 6 for the year 2021 will be heard concerning the same. A copy of said local law is available for inspection during regular business hours by contacting the clerk of the Board of Supervisors at the above-stated address and may be viewed on the Warren County website at www.warincounty.ny.com.
Thank you. At this time, I've been notified that Supervisor Diamond, who is the Chair of the Ethics Committee, would like to make a comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to offer some clarification to my colleagues on the board. If you turn to Page 17 or 18 in our disclosure statement, which includes local law itself, the last paragraph, it states, "This statement is subject to public disclosure under the New York State Freedom of Information law, oil, but any information in this statement that is deemed exempt from disclosure by New York State law or the law of Warren County shall be redacted. A FOIL request for information contained in this document will be denied if the information will be used to harass or annoy the filing." The clarification comes as a result of a conversation that I had with the acting county attorney, that we wanted to be a little bit clearer on who that individual or body was going to make that determination. So through discussion, we came up with the determination would be made by the Board of Ethics, and the information, in their opinion, will be or has been used to harass. They would file a denial. I'm hoping going forward that this language that's included in here would discourage any activity as such. Questions have been raised whether we could be sued as a result of adoption. We could be sued for any reason, any Article 78 could be filed. But what this does here, and if we're being, and adding this clarity to this statement means that the county attorney is not going to make that decision, the county administrator is not going to make that decision, the chairman or chairwoman of the board will not make that decision, but the committee that's going to be appointed by this full board, which is three members, will make that decision. If you look at Section 20 of our local law, it reflects on what the responsibilities are of the Ethics Committee. So I put that out there today, just to kind of clear this up a little bit. If there's any questions going forward, and anybody that's listening to the public hearing, I will entertain those questions. Thank you very much for your time and consideration on this clarification.
Thank you, Supervisor. Without objection at this time, what I would like to do is offer the opportunity for the public hearing, and then if anyone has any questions regarding this for further clarification, we can address those by the board. Sir, have there been any written comments that have been filed regarding this public hearing?
No, we haven't received anything.
Thank you. And as we always do in our public hearings, it's important to have dialogue with our public in multiple modes. Don Lehman, has there been anything electronically submitted or comments for this public hearing?
Good morning, Chairwoman Seaver. No, we have not received anything via the email addresses for this issue.
Thank you. And at this point in time, is there anyone here in the public that would like to be heard regarding the public hearing? Not hear any comment or anyone from the public wishing to be heard? Are there any questions or concerns before I close the public hearing regarding this? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing at this time. And we'll move on to reports by, first the Chair, then the chairs of our committees. I'm so proud of this board and how well we have been able to work together to provide results and to listen to our taxpayers. In January, I made the commitment that we would listen, we would act, and we would be proactive. We have an incredible opportunity with one-time funding that's come into this county. We went to our taxpayers, and we asked them how they would like to see our American Rescue Plan Act dollars spent. And with the help of Mike Colvin, and I definitely would like to recognize all of his hard efforts, and with all of you, every single member of the board, we've been able to share our survey for the last four weeks. Those results have been outstanding. We have received 1,099 responses, and I know there's still some hard copy surveys that are coming in. All of you were emailed about a 65-page document this morning that provides you with all of the additional comments as they were received here by our office, and a rating on the five eligible ways that we've been advised that ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, can be spent. You have a summary page in front of you this morning at your desk, and I just, again, want to highlight that this is the first time Warren County's gone out with a survey to the public saying, "We want to hear from you." And that's with your support, with our teamwork, and we were able to come back and really listen to these results. The plan moving forward, hopefully, and I know that today we're going to hear a little bit more from our county administrator about this as a request from the Treasurer's Office and how we need to clarify and allocate these dollars, would be to continue to meet and have a working group that would be reporting through the Economic Development and Growth Committee, which is a committee of our board chaired by Supervisor Hogan. At the start of this, we've all talked at the board about having both Treasurer Swan and Budget Officer Thomas work with the public during the survey period. Thank you for your efforts. Supervisor Vice Chair, Majority Leader Doug Beatty, along with Supervisor Economic Growth and Chairwoman Supervisor Hogan, have worked with our elected officials, both on the board and locally various elected officials for their input. And Minority Leader Personnel Chair Braemer has worked with our county administrator Moore very closely with our employees. And I think the fact that over 300 employees identified themselves in the survey and took the survey really speaks volumes for the type of engagement. I encourage you to read this report, and I'm hopeful that this group of individuals will come together in the next week to look at those common denominators and to sit down and talk about who would be appropriate to put on an advisory group from the community along with members of our board to continue to evaluate these results. So I know that's a little bit of light reading for the weekend, but I'm really excited over it and thrilled to have had so much public interaction, and I want to thank our public because that is the type of community engagement that makes us all stronger. During this month, I attended all of our committee meetings. I've started the budget meeting process under the leadership of our Budget Officer Frank Thomas, and I very much look forward to this process this year. I've also participated in our county attorney interviews, calls with superintendents. I've participated in trainings with our National Association of Counties, along with, and I have to say, I really enjoyed the opportunity to go to the town of Chester on August 10th, and also to the town of Lake Luzerne on August 2nd and August 9th. I made a commitment to attend all of your board meetings before the year is over, and I started off with Lake George, and you had a very lengthy, informative meeting, which I very much enjoyed, and what I have learned is both Chester and Luzerne, they exceeded your three-hour meeting as well, and it was excellent. I really enjoyed the presentations and being able to give a county update and look forward to getting to all of your towns. I had an opportunity to go visit Supervisor Smith up at Food Truck Fridays, and I have to say, what an incredible accomplishment, all summer to have the type of tourism that has come up to your community, and it was so much fun. And if you haven't had a chance to go, I'm really going to continue to encourage our board to support each one of our municipalities. But again, a nice example of how occupancy tax provides such an incredible support to all of our communities here in Warren County, and appreciate the leadership of Supervisor Garrity heading up that occupancy tax process. It's not an easy one, and you're all doing an incredible job on it, and the evidence is right in front of you today in the occupancy tax application we're taking a look at. I attended numerous ribbon cuttings. We also have had several vaccination clinics that I've been able to get out to, and thank, of course, our public health for all their hard work. Our Employment and Training, we had an employee appreciation and a pin certificate presentation that was under the leadership of Liza, and what an incredible award recognition that is, and want to thank all of our youth for their participation. And the last thing I want to do is sit here and go through my daily calendar, so it's not going to happen, but I will certainly make sure that I'm documenting all of those events and efforts on behalf of all of you. It's a privilege to be able to serve in this capacity. I want to call your attention to your resolution dedicating the Lou Tessier Way. We will be dedicating, hopefully upon your support today. That resolution came through committee unanimously on September 10th at 12:30 at the airport, and want to thank both Dan Bennett and Scott Walton for their efforts and advocacy in recognizing prior Chair of the Board and Supervisor Lou Tessier. And lastly, we, I shouldn't say lastly, but my goodness, it's been so busy and incredible to, over the last month, to continue to work with all of you. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize Janelle Jones as well. She has been selected as the Good Scout Award recipient, and I'm sure Janelle is listening on our call this morning, and that presentation will be in September, so please mark your calendars for that, and we'll send out some information about it. And you have two other proclamations in your packet today, one recognizing probation and parole appreciation month. We have an incredible probation department, and just this past month, in between our meetings, we did have the National Director of the Association of Probation come to Warren County with the State Director to recognize our probation department. So that proclamation is in front of you, as well as proclamation honoring Women's Equality Day, which is on April, or excuse me, August 26th. There is a luncheon for that, and hopefully all of you will be able to attend that as well. And I think that concludes our proclamations, and of course, again, thank you to Sam Parker for all of your efforts. So that being said, sorry for the lengthy report, I tried to summarize it. I love hearing about all of your hard work and all our committee members. So at this point in time, let's move on to our committee reports, and we'll start with Supervisor Beatty, who this month had Finance, Government Operations, and Advocacy, and opened up the Executive Committee as well. So Supervisor Beatty, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'll start off with Finance. We met on July 29th, and your package has Resolutions 299 and 300, also 343 and 346, purely self-explanatory, supplemental appropriations, which we always do a roll quote, as well as managing the county budget, that's also a roll quote, 343 to 346. There's a resolution from the airport asking to highlight airport, airfield services provide payment margins, we discussed this at that point in time. Also, 344, Finance, that's increasing capital projects. 345, also on the Treasury, I think a resolution, 184, 2021, we're going to give some small sliver of land to John Furt, who nobody wanted it. John Furt said, "Well, we'll take it, nobody wants it." So thank you, Andrea, for picking that off our hands. And also adopting, 346 is adopting a revised credit for housing for the public services up that side. That concluded our Finance. Our government op met on the 19th of July, and in there we have two, we have three resolutions, 318, 19, and 20. We're authorizing the submission of an application to the New York State Board of Elections for early voting expansion grant program. 319, we're going to authorize submission of an application to the New York State Board of Elections for the technology innovation election resource, another grant program. And then 320, Warren County requests to be exempt from New York State's Senate Bill and State Assembly Bill that require for early voting, polling, location in the largest city in the county. That would be Glens Falls, and I'd like to make a point that this, we aren't looking at not having another voting district for early voting. It didn't make much sense to have it in Glens Falls, where we have one already in Queensberry. I know that they're looking up county, and I believe Warren is probably the obvious best choice for it, and they're looking at that. Mayor Hall sent a letter also indicating that he did not want Glens Falls to be another second early voting place, since it was almost duplicating the effort. We want to get to more residents, not less, and we need one up county, but once we're using common sense, and it's a rarity, but we're using common sense and trying to get to more citizens. Before I go into Executive Committee, which met, and I co-chaired with Supervisor Braemer, without objection, Chairwoman without objection, Chairwoman, I'd like to introduce an individual to speak on the STR, which is short-term rentals. I know it's a little out of place, but he has his kid with him, and due to time constraints, I'd like to have him on now instead of the end, because he won't be here at the end, having his family here. Without objection, could I do that?
As long as there's no objection, I don't see why not. I know it's regarding a request for legislation and advocacy, and I think it falls within your committee. And I'm hopeful that next year we can look at having a privilege of the floor earlier in our rules of the board as well. Is there any objection to this? No. Sir, would you like to take the podium and just state your name and speak into the microphone?
This is going to be Mr. Dubowski, Jim Dubowski, Queensbury resident, and he has done extensive research and has firsthand knowledge on a number of issues, specifically the STR. So Jim, I'll take it. I'll leave it over to you.
Thank you. I just want to introduce myself. My name is Jim Dubowski. I'm a teacher at Fordham. Before I was a teacher, I was actually a press secretary for the South County Legislature down on Long Island, and I had two jobs besides taking care of the whole legislative board, was to look at trends in the country and look at possible problems that could come into South County. I haven't lived in South County for a really long time. I've been a resident of Warren County for almost 15 years. Recently, a short-term rental moved next door, and I was neutral, just like everybody else, about short-term rentals. In fact, my wife even thought about maybe, from time to time, renting our home as a short-term rental. And you learn more when you're participating in something. And here are two, one trend and one concern I have with short-term rentals. In Colorado, willing workers can no longer find homes, because there's so many short-term rentals. And I'm not talking just about people who want to work at McDonald's or whatever. I'm talking about sheriffs. If you just Google Summit County, you'll discover the trend there is to restrict short-term rentals. They were all for short-term rentals when they first started, but now they're so devastating the working economy that they're actually looking to outlaw them. There was one town, it popped up on my feed yesterday, and I apologize, I was trying to find the article this morning, but Fred notified my family that we have a leak in our roof, so I was kind of busy trying to patch that yesterday. One town has actually set aside $350,000 to start paying short-term rentals to rent long-term. So it's having a negative impact effect. Arizona, schools are closing, because people are no longer living in the houses that are being rented for short-term. Well, people are, but they're tourists. They're no longer residents. I have a friend in Orlando who moved from her community, because when the real estate dropped, the trend was for short-term investors to come in, people who are not part of the community, buying all the houses. And she didn't know who any of her neighbors were, so that she actually had to move from her community. All you have to do is Google "Lake Placid renters move," and you'll see a whole bunch of articles of people in Lake Placid who are being affected by this. There's one article where the woman is concerned that when her son comes back from college, she'll no longer have a place to stay in Lake Placid, because she's a renter. Just to kind of give you an example, my wife is on the STR committee for the town of Queensbury. There were two hosts that are on that committee. Between the two of them, they own five homes. The person next door to me reports to own 12. So those are now 12 homes that no longer, you were receiving the bed tax and were receiving other taxes, but we're losing state taxes as far as students in school, the numbers in the census, even though Warren County has gone up. We only, the population has only increased by 30, and if you look at where the populations are declining, they're populations that have a lot of short-term rentals. Just if you go to their DNA, Johnsburg has a 6% quarterly growth in short-term rentals. Bolton Landing has a 33% quarterly growth of short-term rentals, and Warrenburg has a 28% of short-term rentals quarterly. Those are houses that are now becoming empty, that no longer has workers in them. Now, I don't have the numbers for the bed tax of short-term renters, but in 2018, Airbnb reported that renters spent 4.5 million in rental fees, and there was about 400 units. So if the county collected 100% of the bed tax for those homes in 2018, that's $180,000. And I know, being government, that sounds like a lot of money, and if you double it, that's 360. However, there's a discourse that happens in a community. If anyone who lives next door to an STR, you'll discover that it kind of ruins the feel of a community. I've never had somebody visit my home, and when they discover that there's a short-term rental live next door, they're like, wow, that's awesome. Most people kind of take a deep breath. And then I just want you to think about it. How would you feel if there was a short-term rental next door? So with the bed tax, what I discovered is there's an economic policy institute report that says that 98% of Airbnb users would still visit an area that they intended to visit, whether there was a Verbo, an Airbnb, or any such rentals. Now, you have to ask yourself, are we collecting 98% of the occupancy tax from short-term rentals? The person next door to me, who owns a hotel, hasn't paid short-term rentals, I foiled it the other day, in a year and a half. So I know of one person, but if it's not at 98%, that's revenue that we're losing just by allowing short-term rentals. Now, I'm not going to get into what the solution should be. If anyone wants to contact me, there's a whole bunch of ways that short-term rentals can be controlled, that all the counties and municipalities are doing it. But there was one thing that I discovered when I was doing all this research, that should take it, make everyone in this room take pause. And I didn't discover it, it was brought to my attention by the Warren County Sheriff's Department, so I recommend that people just contact them and, you know, verify if what I'm about to tell you is true. But this is, as a parent, the thing that scares me about short-term rentals being in my community the most. In 1984, a seven-year-old girl was lowered into a home with a dog by a predator. That girl's name was Megan, and the Megan's Law was crafted. Well, Megan's Law hasn't been ratified since 2006. Airbnb started in 2008, and the trend is increasing. So why do I bring up Megan's Law and short-term rentals? Well, there's a loophole in Megan's Law. Any sexual predator, any level, has a 10-day window to change address when they move or go to any location. Now, if they go to a hotel, that's a commercial area, and you, as a parent, you keep your eye on your child when you're at a hotel or in a commercial area, when I bring my kids down to Lake George. But we're now keeping, now feel uncomfortable, because we have strangers living right next door. So that means any sexual predator can come into a short-term rental and stay for 10 days, actually nine, before having to report to any law enforcement that they're in the area. Now, I know what a lot of people think, well, Airbnb does background checks. Well, they kind of don't. I have an article right from Airbnb's community center about a person who discovered they had a sexual predator. I have another article from Commercial Observer about the black market of sexual predators using short-term rentals. I have articles about Airbnb not listening to their workers, try to limit crime, and how much they pay to silence people when events like a woman being raped, they just paid a woman $6 million, kind of hush it up. So my concern is that we're allowing these sexual predators to come into our neighborhood. Now, this is something I was never aware of. I've talked to Airbnb owners who are shocked about this. Now, Airbnb only does a background check on the person who rents the home. That's it. We know from the incident on Dino Park that a house was rented to a bunch of teenagers, and a parent rented that for them. So my concern is that we are unintentionally allowing these possible predators into neighborhoods. Now, we've estimated in a year and a half, we've had 500 strangers living next door. Now, I co-own a piece of property, my access road, with that short-term rental. So there's 500 strangers who have access to my house, to my property, and to my children. And I just want to leave you with this, and it's not a Catholic guilt thing, but how comfortable would you feel with strangers constantly living next door, and the potential of one of those out of the 500 either being a criminal or a sexual predator? I think it's something, as a community, we kind of need to address. You're not the only body that I've talked to. I've talked to the town of Queensbury, I've talked to the State Assembly, I've talked to the State Senate, I've talked to our Congresswoman. It just seems to be falling on deaf ears, and I really don't understand why. So the wave of short-term rentals is short-term gain with tax revenue, long-term loss, because we're going to lose stuff like state and federal funding, which is the trend that it's showing, because our population, if you want to consider 30 an increase, is actually going down in most areas. And the concern is we're possibly allowing these sexual predators into our neighborhoods without any knowing. So I'd like to thank Mr. Beatty for giving me the time, and Supervisor Seber, so I appreciate it. I know this is very unorthodox, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
The floor is still yours, Supervisor Beatty.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Just one question. Have you ever had any pushback from Airbnb, Jim?
I'm being sued by the industry right now.
For what?
Harassment, defamation of character, work done on my house, you name it.
Because you question the practices.
It started after I started, my wife and I started attending, sorry, started attending town meetings, and then we received a threatening letter that if I addressed any government body, town, or contact Airbnb again, not only would I be sued, but the safeguards that I've put in place with the STR owner for my children would be taken away.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you for taking the time this morning to share your concerns with us, and to your young sons, you should be very proud of your dad. Thank you for being here. Supervisor Beatty, I trust this is an issue you'll be addressing within government operations?
Yes, thank you.
And advocacy?
Could I continue now?
Please.
I co-chaired the executive committee with Chairwoman Seber.
Point of order, Chairwoman Bramer.
He's looking right at me.
It's okay, just clarifying.
Bramer.
Oh, not Seber.
That's what happened in turn 29.
Just for the record.
Chairwoman Braber. I co-chaired it as our policy, but not policy, as our practices. Although I'm chairman, we rotate the active chair every time the meeting meets, committee meets. So this is the second time to commit. We do in alphabetical order. Supervisor Braber got the nod, so I will turn now over that committee to Supervisor.
Supervisor.
Do you want me to do that during my report, or just go ahead now?
She's next anyway on the list.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Okay, I'm going to go ahead with my whole report. That's okay. My next?
You are?
Thank you. Okay, give me one second. So for personnel and higher education, we met on July 29th. There are resolutions in your packets starting at 335. Pretty standard things. I do want to point out 337, which is authorizing a new flexible spending account for our employees. There will be a small fee that will be imposed by the county, but we're hoping that in the end, it's a sort of a financial wash. So we think that it's an important benefit to be able to provide to our employees without having to cost the county too much money. And then in 338 and 339, those are the resolutions authorizing our agreements with two of those unions. We've been working very hard on the negotiating team. Everybody knows that by now at this point, and so this is the PBA and the Alliance. So we're very happy to be able to get those done, and I think both of those have already been ratified by the unions, I believe. We also met for personnel on Tuesday for county attorney interviews. We didn't have a great attendance of all the supervisors, so we decided not to try to make any recommendations at the time of the meeting. We will be coming back to the Personnel Committee for further discussion about that and hopefully be able to move us forward on that particular process. So Personnel is meeting again on September 1st, I believe. We also had the Executive Committee met on August 12th. Supervisor Beatty mentioned, we co-chaired that this last time. There's, we had mostly litigation updates and executive sessions. There were a few resolutions that came out of that, and you'll see those starting at One of those is for the back wages that we still owe on a particular litigation piece. The second one was 350, which has to do with Auctions International paying them for the public auction on the Mullins Building. If we do not accept any of the bids, say if we don't have one that is sufficient for the county board of supervisors, we still are going to pay them a small fee, $2,000 for their services. And then 351, this has to do with the airport budget and amending that, paying out additional monies for that litigation relating to the eminent domain. And then the last one was authorizing a settlement with respect to the opioid litigation that we entered a couple of years ago, and this is only for one defendant. So that litigation will not be completely resolved, but we do have a settlement going forward with the one. I also want to mention that the Septic Committee that I chair met on July 15th, and we had a really great discussion. We'll be meeting again on September 1st at 4:00 p.m. And I do want to note that I have been in touch with Dave Wick over at the Park Commission. We're going to try to do a little bit more to coordinate our meetings and the efforts that we are engaged in right now. So I think that's really great, and that is my full committee report. I think Supervisor Beatty wants to have another shot at a comment on the Executive Committee. If I missed something, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bramer. Supervisor Beatty, I do not, would you like to finish your report?
Well, thank you. I just want to give one of the resolutions from the executive committee that came out, Resolution 351. I believe a lot of the supervisors weren't even on the board at that time, and I wanted to give a little background information on that before they vote on it. Just makes sense. That resolution, which is authorizing $190,000 to Forest Enterprises, was a, in 2014, many on this board decided, hey, let's take this guy's land from eminent domain out at the airport. It was obviously never needed, it was a total waste. We didn't even have FAA agreement to proceed with the thousand-foot boondoggle runway. I know Mr. Garrity likes to boondoggle. So I just wanted to give a little background information that this bad decision by many on this board back in 2014 is still, to this day, costing the county hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I wanted, otherwise, people wouldn't even know, the newer supervisors like Bruno and Driscoll and Smith and Hogan, they were not on this board, as well as a few other supervisors. But because this board decided to take eminent land through eminent domain, which was never needed, was never a safety issue, because that runway was rated as the safest runway in New York State, with no, zero objections or...
Obstruction.
Obstructions. Thank you, Mr. McGowan. So it was never a safety issue, it was strictly the board being ridiculous and over many objections by some of the other supervisors. It went and took this land, eminent domain, and now, and now, we pay 327,000. Now, we have to pay another 190,000, seven years later, and there could be more costs. So I just wanted to give a little background information on those supervisors that weren't here on that resolution. Thank you.
Supervisor Conover.
Thank you. The Public Works Committee met on July 20th. It was a light agenda represented in your packet by resolutions 330 and 331. I think they're straightforward. There was discussion at that meeting or the previous meeting regarding e-bikes. Jack Diamond has been handling that issue, perhaps he has more to say when it's his report, but I think that the general approach is to get as much information as possible and to propose as safe and functional way as is possible. And that concludes my report.
Supervisor Diamond.
Thank you, Madam.
Public Safety and, I'm sorry, I should have said your committees, Public Safety and Ethics Financial Disclosure Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Committee of Public Safety met in the month of July. In front of you are Resolutions 323 through 329. 323 is accepting a... 323 is accepting a donation from Paul Buret for a antenna for radio repeaters up in the Gore Mountain amateur area and sending a letter of appreciation to Paul for his donation. Resolution 324 is appointing members to the County Advisory Board for EMS. Resolution 25 is appointing members to the County Fire Advisory Board. Resolution 26 is ratifying the action of the Warren County Sheriff's in executing a grant application not to exceed $21,000. Resolution 327, again, is ratifying an action of a grant application for $145,394. And Resolution 328 is accepting, is authorizing a submission, again, of a grant application to New York State for Stop DWI Foundations, not to exceed $15,000. Resolution 329 is authorizing agreement, Memorandums of Understanding with City of Glens Falls, Warren County District Attorney's Offices, Warren County Probation Department, Forest Stop DWI Program. What I, and as mentioned by Supervisor Conover, I did take the liberty to reach out to Connor Morgan and I spoke with him about scheduling a joint meeting with Department of Public Doors, along with the Board of Public Safety in discussion and be educated on e-bikes and the potential use of e-bikes on our bike trail. He was happy that we responded back. We will be scheduling that joint meeting sometime in September and he's anxious to come down and speak with us. We offered an extension to every member of this board here. If you would like to go up to see him, speak with him directly or personally, or even take an e-bike out and take a ride, you're certainly welcome to do that. So, I won't be doing that, but I offer that out to every, all my colleagues here on the board. The other thing I want to mention is I want to thank my committee of McGowan, Bramer, Frazier and Sheffler for moving these resolutions out of the committee to the full board for approval today. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Supervisor Dickinson, Environmental Concerns and Real Property.
We have one resolution. It is a resolution concerning the Mullen property. We are putting it on a single-line auction. We'll have an offset price and that's Resolution 316 and that's my report.
Thank you Supervisor Dickinson. Supervisor Driscoll, Extension Services and Human Services.
Thank you Chairwoman. The Human Services Committee met on July 19th. There are no resolutions coming out of that meeting, but plenty has been happening at Social Services, Veteran Services and the Countryside Adult Home. During the course of the month, I do my best to try to get out information in regard to the ERAP, SNAP, Medicaid and other programs and services for vulnerable populations. Also, information on what's happening at Countryside, Veteran Services and especially their peer-to-peer program. The Human Services Committee will next meet on this coming Monday, August 23rd, at or about 12:05 PM. Countryside and Department of Social Services will be addressing us. The Budget Review Meetings for those departments, Wednesday, August 25th, Veteran Services at 9:00 AM, DSS and Countryside at 9:30. And then the following day, Thursday, August 26th, Cornell Cooperative Extension will be on at 12 o'clock noon. This past Wednesday, myself and Supervisors Hogan, Leggett and McDevitt, and I may have missed others who were there, were at a housing market presentation for the region held at SUNY Adirondack. That was a co-effort of the Economic Development Corporation and Southern Adirondack Realtors Association, as well as the folks up at SUNY Adirondack. Very informative. I understand from Jim Siplon, who I saw yesterday, that PowerPoint presentation's already been put out online for individuals to look at. I would encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Frazier with Health Services.
Thank you. Health Services met on July 19th. We only have two resolutions. Resolution number 321, which is authorizing continuation agreement with the New York State Department of Health and Health Research Institute for Public Health Emergency Preparedness Plan Funding. And the second one is authorizing renewal of the grant agreement with the New York State Department of Health Bureau of Community, Environmental Health and Food Protection for the Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Program. We'd appreciate your support on that. We will also be meeting on Monday and both the Office of the Aging and Public Health have a couple of important issues that we'll be discussing at that time. So, I expect all my committee members will be there. And as Ben stated, we'll also be doing our Budget Review for Office of the Aging and Public Health on the 27th. So, thank you.
Thank you. I also neglected in our committee report in the beginning to highlight the brand-new fire tower in Supervisor Frazier's town and appreciate all that support and leadership there. It's an incredible resource to our community. Supervisor Garrity with Tourism and Occupancy Tax.
Yeah, we had two meetings this month, July 20th and 29th. You have three resolutions in your packet, 332, 333 and 334. And I'd like to thank the staff at Tourism for working on these resolutions and putting together, I believe, a good program, a good application that we'll be using for many years going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Hogan, Economic Growth and Development.
Thank you Chairwoman. Economic Growth and Development met in July and we have before you 312 through 315, which of course I hope you'll support. I do want to point out that while it's obvious that I feel everything Cornell Cooperative Extension does is important to our health, our children and our economy, 313 was a resolution that was brought before this committee because, for a time concern. We needed to pass that, or move that resolution along so that we could reallocate the money so that kids could have some opportunities over the summer. So, thank you for your support, especially on that one. While the work of Economic Growth and Development Committee is always engaging and important, the real, the real work this month that was done, was done by the Lake Champlain, Lake George Regional Planning Board. And I want to recognize Beth Gillies and her team, as well as our county planning personnel, Sarah Frankenfeld, for their extraordinary efforts to submit a very large grant on behalf of filling some broadband gaps in the county. It was a lot of hours, a lot of nighttime hours, and they really, really put in an effort and got that in on behalf of six counties. Jim Siplon and his team were a part of that effort and I want to thank them as well. As you heard earlier, the housing, short-term rentals and housing is a topic that we are going to have to talk about a lot coming up. And the presentation that Supervisor Driscoll referenced was very informative. Jim Siplon will be with us on Monday at our committee meeting to go over some of that presentation and I hope you will all attend. Thank you.
Thank you. And Supervisor Hogan, thank you for agreeing to take on the added responsibility of the ARPA Advisory Group, along with, since they fall under your committee, the Planning Department and of course, our Treasurers Office and Administrator. That is a winning team to continue to move this forward over the next several years and it will take a lot of work, so I appreciate that. Supervisor Leggett, Criminal Justice.
Thank you Chairwoman Seber. Criminal Justice met on July 19th. There are seven resolutions before you, number 305 through 311. Five are from probation and two are from the public defender. Four of the probation ones are agreements regarding the Y Reconnects Program. Very good progressive program the department is putting on. One is an agreement with Progressive Parenting for Family Support, continuation of agreements that they have through the years. Public Defender Resolutions are for authorization for submitting the Office of Indigent Legal Services Grants, which does significant funding for that office. Would appreciate your support on those resolutions. We also referred four requests to fill vacant positions to Personnel Committee for reporting purposes. One was for Assistant Public Defender and three were in the Probation Department. These were vacancies being filled. What did not go through the Criminal Justice Committee because of the timing on it, but was picked up, and this is before you now in Resolution 335. It's for the creation of the Ninth Assistant DA and Legal Clerk. These are positions that are critical for the efficient operation of our DA's office. I'd like to thank Supervisor Thomas and Administrator Moore and others for bringing this up and getting this through so quickly. Also, thank you Chairwoman for coming up to Chester for our monthly board meeting. It was great to have you. It was a good meeting. As you saw, we had representatives from the Northern Forest Center who are working with the Attracting New Residents Strategy for the Adirondacks. And Chester has been involved with them as a community to be able to implement some of these processes of what we can do for wins within our community, for making a more livable and attractive community for new residents and count that as being young families, the children, et cetera. Also made it up Swede Mountain. That was great. Congratulations to the supervisors on the corner there, Supervisor Smith and Supervisor Frazier for getting that. That is a great asset now as it goes over. If we can get the fire tower up on Gore Mountain opened up to public, that would be, we'd have some great points here. And also attended the housing presentation the other day at SUNY Adirondack. Thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor Leggett. I also want to point out that Supervisor Leggett is a member on the NACO Committee. Today, we released a press release which highlights and congratulates Supervisor Leggett for his appointment to the Resilient Advisory Committee. That is something he served in the capacity of last year. And again, he was reappointed by NACO this year. Congratulations. Supervisor McGowan with County Facilities.
Thank you, Chairwoman. County Facilities met July 20th. We have four resolutions, 301, 302, 303 and 304. So, 301 is really a grant application from the FAA for airport improvement programs. That's just a grant we're applying for. 302 is authorizing the submission of a grant application from the New York State Department of Transportation for the multi-model funds to be used for the transportation-related projects at the airport. The most important one, 303, is the dedication of the driveway for Lou Tessier and for all he did for our county and Lake George over the years. And I, and I hope everybody can join that to show their support and if not, at least Google and just to remind yourself of all he did. It was, it's really amazing. And as I brought it up in committee, you know, I was, not even the thought of politics back then, but I always remember reading in the paper and Lou's name was always in there for so many things. And, you know, looking into it further, this is a great dedication, I believe, to a very, you know, honorable person that really put everything he had into, into politics in Lake George and our county. So, I think this is a great dedication and I look forward to attending that. And 304, we have a resolution authorizing the Cornell Cooperative Extension to use the county-owned training facility for fair activities. This is the new training facilities that it's been going on up there. It's really Supervisor Bruno has been right on top of that and along with Jim, that it's been a little process coming, but it's really coming along. It's just about there and it's just, the Cornell Extension means so much to the people and what it gives back to everyone. And I just want to thank really Supervisor Bruno and Supervisor Hogan for all your support that you have shown for the Cornell Extension and it's truly just a great project. So, that's all I have and thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Marino typically chairs Parks Operations and Management. I don't believe that they have met this past month, but I know we're certainly wishing Supervisor Marino well. He's on a medical leave. I would like to just take a moment and recognize that their deputy supervisor is here on behalf of Lake Luzerne, Deputy Supervisor Dan Waterhouse. And I've certainly appreciated learning more this month and attending your meetings. And we are here to be responsive to Lake Luzerne and in the absence of our friend and colleague Supervisor Marino and anything we can do to assist, please, please let us know. Supervisor Dickinson, you are the vice chair in that committee. I don't, am I correct in saying they didn't meet this last month?
We met in June 22nd. So, no, we didn't meet this month.
I do think, yeah, I think Supervisor Garrity did report on that last month.
Okay.
Thank you. And Supervisor Thomas, our Budget Office.
Thank you Madam Chairwoman. The Budget Committee did not meet in this past month. However, the Budget Review Meetings, as you've heard from a couple of individuals today, has begun. I expect the first round of those meetings will be done by the end of August. So, I would anticipate at some point after that, that the Budget Committee will meet. That's my report.
Great, thank you. At this point in time, I'd like to ask our county administrator to provide his report.
Thank you Madam Chair. Good morning, everybody. As we customarily do in this report, we'd like to acknowledge the Warren County employees who have hit employment milestones. This month, there are three who have all been employed by the county for 20 years. We have John Deeb from the Department of Social Services, Rachel DeRose from the Department of Social Services and John Wells from the Sheriff's Department. We thank all three of you for your dedication to this county and the service that you've provided to its residents. Thank you so much. On July 21st, I, in this room, attended a presentation by the State Probation Director, Robert Macaron, and the Executive Director of the American Probation and Parole Association. And the occasion was that the Executive Director was visiting the state of New York and traveling with the State Probation Director. And she, the Executive Director at the national level, wanted to spend some time with some, you know, on-the-ground probation officers and our probation department was chosen. That has to do with the great work that they do and the respect that our probation director, Bob UCI, has at the state level. He is a real player in all of the policies that are developed. He's very well-respected. I knew about Bob long before I came to Warren County through his colleagues in other counties who think very highly of him. So, it was a privilege to get to sit for that and to see our probation officers acknowledged for the hard work that they do and our probation director for his, for his status and all the great work that he does, not only for us, but for the people more broadly in New York State. We thank them all. On July 23rd, I attended a planning meeting for the Joseph Warren Center. Supervisor Thomas and I and Supervisor Strau, Superintendent Hajos and several others are involved in the Steering Committee for that worthwhile project. A county attorney, Tru Williger, is involved as well. And it's a lot of fun for us to do and we hope that that develops into a tourist attraction and a leadership resource for future generations. On the 26th and the 27th, we concluded negotiations with the PBA and the Alliance. And as Supervisor Bramer mentioned, you have those resolutions before you today. We believe that they were good deals for both the employees and for the county and we certainly hope that we have the support of the Board of Supervisors on those. I want to thank the negotiating teams for both of those unions for coming to the table and having a very meaningful give and take with all of us. We all learned a lot and we came away with mutual respect and that's the way you always want these to go. So, thank you to all of them. On the August 2nd, I attended a kickoff press conference for the Special Olympics. We're very happy to have the Special Olympics back in Glens Falls, I believe, for the next three years. They have an application that's coming before the Tourism Committee next week and I personally believe it's a very worthwhile application and I look forward to the committee discussing that application next week. So, great to see the athletes at this press conference and it's going to be a real joy to watch them compete right here in our hometown. On last Friday, August 13th, I attended the SYEP picnic. That stands for senior, I always want to say senior, but it stands for summer. That stands for Sen-, I always want to say senior, but it stands for Summer Youth Employment Program. And it's administered by the Employment and Training Department. They do a great job with it. And it was so nice to see county employees knowing so much about these individual kids and knowing their stories, knowing their challenges. It's a great program and I'm really proud of it. I would encourage everybody to go to this picnic in the future if you can because it's a reminder that the work that we do here, we handle it in the abstract, but it really does affect people in our community and it's nice to see that in play. On the 18th and 19th, that was the past two days we started doing budget review. All the supervisors have the calendar. These are our internal review meetings, if you will. All of these budget requests will go to committee for review at the committee level in a public meeting. These are essentially meetings that we do at the staff level to make sure that we understand what's in these requests. You're all welcome to come to those if your heart desires. There are a couple of broader issues I wanted to touch on. The first is the ARPA funds that have been discussed today. There's an interim report that's due at the end of this month. It's due August 31st. And we're required in that interim report to report on any dedication of funds that we have done so far. We don't have any yet. The dedication of those funds is going to be part of the public process that Chairwoman has outlined. And it's going to eventually go into this board for approval. So until the board designates funding to a particular project, we don't have any designations of funding to report. The second requirement that we have is to report the calculation that the Treasurer's Office would use for revenue recovery. Where because 2020 has ended and the books have closed on 2020, the US Treasury has instructed all of the governments how to calculate revenue recovery for 2020. And we're required to put that calculation into the report. It is our intention to do that. The Treasurer's Office has worked with the outside auditors to calculate that according to the guidance put forth by the Treasury. This does not mean that we are going to claim the entire revenue recovery number. It's only a report of what the calculation is. And it keeps our options open going forward to be able to use that category if our process dictates it and if the board decides to do that. So I do want to stress that we'll be reporting that calculation, but that doesn't necessarily mean we're going to go in that direction. Any questions on that or any concerns? Could I explain that better? Okay. The, I've been asked also about the new census numbers, the 2020 census figures for each town and the village, the city, the wards within the city. Those numbers are final from the US Census Bureau. And I've been asked how that affects the weighted vote. It will affect the weighted vote. There is a process that we have to follow that's dictated by case law. And our county attorney is researching the case law on that. And our IT department is going to have to do a mathematical analysis that again is dictated by the case law. What you do essentially is you reapportion the weighted vote according to the new population thresholds. And you also have to do a separate analysis of voting power for each supervisor. And it's a mathematical analysis. It involves looking at a computer. And if you take, if you, I'll try to explain this as best I can. We'll get more into this when we bring this to committee and we work it through. The idea is to get this done by the November board meeting so that the new weighted votes are effective for the organizational meeting next year. You have to, what you have to do is you have to look at the, all of the combinations of votes that could possibly occur on a board of this size. So every person has one or one, has two votes. You could either vote yes or you could vote no. If you abstain, if you're not here, it has the effect of counting as a no. So you look at a yes and you look at a no. And you raise that to the power of the number of supervisors that are on the board. So two to the 20th power is over a million voting combinations. So you run all of those combinations through the computer. You have the computer isolate all of the instances in which one of you could be the swing vote. And that's something like 522,000 instances where with different voting combinations where one of you is the swing vote. The computer program tallies up the amount of times each of you are in that position. And that determines your voting power. It's called the Banzav Power Index. It's, it's, it sounds crazy, but this is all in case law. This is, we have to run this analysis. And if you can't do it internally like we can, it can get quite expensive. We paid a lot of money in 2010 in Saratoga County to do this. But basically, what you have to get to is a scenario where everybody's voting power approximates the percentage of the population that they represent. If I could give you a real-world parallel, it's not real world, but just to help you understand what the purpose of all of this is. If we were in a situation where all of the towns and the city had one supervisor and if Queensberry, for example, had 60% of the county's population, you could each have a weighted vote that corresponds to your percentage of the population. But if you got one supervisor representing each town under that scenario, the way the Queensberry supervisor votes every single time is going to be the way the question is decided. So in that scenario, although Queensberry has 60% of the weighted vote, they have 100% of the voting power. So the reason to do all these computations is to try to make sure that the voting power is approximately the same as the percentage of the population. So it's, you would think that on the outset, that reorganizing the weighted vote is an easy task, but it's really not. It's going to be a lot of legwork. And we're working on it with IT and the County Attorney's Office to make sure that we do that properly. We'll run this through committee, again, with the idea of getting a local law to go through the Personnel Committee because it's all the departments that report to Personnel. And it'll, we'll, we'll try to get a local law passed by the November board meeting. That's the timetable that we followed 10 years ago when this board redid the weighted vote. That, I know I said a mouthful. Are there any questions on that? Okay. And the third piece that I wanted to touch today is just on masks and on public health recommendations. You see the numbers every day that we're in the midst of a spike. It's got to do with the Delta variant, which is more transmissible. It's transmissible even by those who are vaccinated. In mid-June, the state lifted most remaining mandates. And ever since that happened in mid-June, the, what we have said publicly and what our Public Health Department has said publicly and what the state has required and what the federal government has required is if you're unvaccinated, you're advised to wear a mask. If you are vaccinated, you, you, you have, you should really take into consideration your own health and the health of those individuals who are in your immediate circle, knowing that it's possible that, I'm vaccinated, for instance. It's possible for me to transmit the Delta variant to other people in my circle. So in my case, I'm wearing the mask today because I don't typically wear the mask. But today, we're all together in this room for an extended period of time. I have a spouse who has an immune issue and I have a four-month-old baby who's obviously not vaccinated. So in this situation, I'll take a look at my circumstance and say, I think I ought to wear the mask today. So there are no mandates in place. It's really, it's left to individual discretion. And I urge you all to think about that and to make the decision that's best for you and best for your family and the circle that's around you every day. You know, not to belabor this, but my mother was going to take a vacation. She takes care of my 90-something-year-old grandfather. She's not going to go on a plane anymore. So, you know, these are some of the choices that all of us individually are going to have to consider. The boosters, the concept of getting a third COVID shot. The federal government is going to be recommending that certain individuals with certain immune conditions get these boosters. In addition, there will be recommendations based on where you work. Healthcare employees, for instance, will be recommended to get these boosters. All of that is a work in progress at the CDC level and at the New York State DOH level. We will be ready. Our Public Health Department will be ready to administer boosters. We just, we need to get some of the bureaucratic steps in place. We need a standing order, for instance, in order to be able to administer them. We're working on that. We want you to know that, that public health will be a resource for that. And by the way, in terms of public health being a resource, we're aware that there's a significant amount of stress in school districts on how to handle masking in the absence of requirements coming down from the state or the federal government. You have recommendations from CDC. You have recommendations now from the New York State Department of Education. And our public health is also a resource for recommendations. We keep up with the federal and the state recommendations. And whether you be, whether you're a school board, whether you're a town board trying to figure out what to do in your town hall or city hall or village hall. If you're a separate governmental board from the county and you're in need of advice, our Public Health Department is available as a resource to give you that advice. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Can we have our report by our acting county attorney, Terwilliger, please?
Hey, good morning. Since the last board meeting, I've attended the last round of committee meetings, attended the Local Development Corporation meeting yesterday. Also attended the Joseph Warren Historical House meeting. That was a very good and enjoyable one. I hope that does turn into a nice tourist attraction for people to come and visit. Also been working on the Metrics Learning Modules and doing those. Haven't completed yet, but I am working on those. We have several new assisted outpatient treatment cases and juvenile delinquency cases on our court calendar. They'll be coming along. There have been some, a couple of good developments on some bankruptcy cases, which I could report more fully on in the Personnel Committee and Executive Session. But there are cases where people had declared bankruptcy partially as a way to get out of tax, property tax foreclosures. One of the cases is going to be settling, involve several parcels up in the town of Bolton. And as part of that settlement in that bankruptcy case, a Chapter 11, the county will be getting some money from that for back taxes. And the other one was a Chapter 13 that was converted to a seven. In doing so, they had to free the house from the bankruptcy. So that asset then was actually a collectible, seizable asset. So that, those taxes are going to be paid. Otherwise, the county would be able to foreclose on the house with, what are the, good stuff. There's the opioid settlement, which I hope will happen. It's not entirely a done deal yet because we need the municipalities to sign on to it in order for it to actually happen. The state's created a account where the money would be paid in to it. That's one of the resolutions today for us is to give authority to Napoli Shkolnik to sign on behalf of the county for that opioid settlement. This is against the Janson Pharmaceuticals, Johnson &amp; Johnson and those companies. There is the one still pending against Purdue Pharmaceuticals, that lawsuit. That's being held in the bankruptcy court down in the Southern District in White Plains. This one was in Nassau County, Venedon, Nassau. And this is the one against the Janson Companies, Johnson &amp; Johnson being one of them, and Janson Pharmaceuticals and some of their subsidiaries on it. And we also have some other, I'm working on a couple of other little research items too as well on some liabilities, some issues with the, following up on the completion of the opioid and some other interesting ones on that. I can, if you'd like, put together a little synopsis on the opioid settlement one because it's, it's kind of detailed. I'm still getting, wrapping my head around it too. But if the supervisors would like, I could put together a synopsis on that opioid settlement, how it is supposed to work. Because the amounts of money the county would be getting vary depending on how many municipalities sign on to it and how quickly they sign on to it. So it's not, as I say, it's still not a done deal yet entirely. And that really concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Reading of Communications?
Reports from Capital District Regional Off-Track Betting Corp. Financial report dated May 31st, 2021. Warren County Probation Report of Criminal and Family Workloads for the Months of May and June 2021. Letters and emails from New York State Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation informing the Mountainside Free Library in Queensberry is to be considered by New York State Board of Historic Preservation for nomination to the National and State Registers of Historic Places. Capital District Regional Off-Track Betting Corp., June 2021, surcharge payment in the amount of $2,299. Capital District Regional Off-Track Betting Corp., 2020 Regional Benefit Distribution Installments Number 18192021, each in the amount of $1,631. And Washington County Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 135 of 2021 to adopt Ad-Rond Act Community College Budget.
Thank you. At this point in time, we'll have discussion and public comment on proposed resolution. Let's first take any public comment for our proposed resolutions here before us today. Would anyone like to be heard regarding resolutions? I'll come right to you Supervisor Garrity. I'm just looking for any public comment.
Oh.
Hearing none. Let's have our discussion between our supervisors. Supervisor Garrity.
I'd like a roll call vote at 3:49, please.
Please let the record reflect the roll call on 3:49. Supervisor Wilde, did I see your hand up a second?
I'm not sure if I did or not, Madam Chair, but I do have a resolution I'd like to bring up to talk about, and that's Resolution 317. This is the resolution that is related to our Ethics and Financial Disclosure Forms. And I've always been concerned about this. I voiced it to members of this board before. What started out a number of months ago was an attempt to take a nine-page document approved by the New York State Controller's Office down to two questions. Now, obviously, the board prevailed. That didn't happen. But we went away for a few more months. And whatever limited intellectual capital the public feels that this board has, we've spent three months on this. Not to say that they didn't do it in earnest, but we spent three months on something that provided no benefit to the public. We still have the ability to redact this information. We've done nothing but limit the information that we as public servants should be providing. So as I go through with this, you know, we are public servants. That's what we're supposed to be. We serve the public, not ourselves. We still don't have an Ethics Review Board. We talk about an Ethics Review Board all the time, but we don't have an Ethics Review Form that, in my sense, my mind, was strategically much more important than changing the information that we provide the public. So before we vote today, I would implore you to act as public servants and vote with respect to how you think our constituents want us to vote. Not what benefits each of us individually, but what the public needs to see from us. So thank you. And I hope you can tell that I'm not in favor of this resolution today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Let's keep the discussion going on Resolution 317. Supervisor Conover, was your, okay, is there further discussion on 317? Supervisor Bremer?
Thanks. I don't have anything substantive with respect to the ethics law itself. I think that the changes are appropriate. I think Supervisor Diamond did a very good job going through them, both at the workshop meeting and we went over them in detail at a full board meeting, I believe it was, last, last month. So I don't have anything on that. I do want to correct what I believe is an error in what Supervisor Wilde said about there not being an Ethics Board. There, there is an Ethics Board that exists. It just, it was really not empowered to do a whole lot. And our former county attorney had advised you, Chairwoman, as far as I know, that their office did not have any of the contact information for the current board members. We have since come to learn that that's not true. And Mr. Terwilliger has found the contact information. So we, we do have a board. And I know that as Personnel Chair, we're in the process of trying to make sure that those, find out if those people are interested. And I've also gotten a lot of interest from other people who do want to serve as a volunteer on this board. And so I think we will be coming forward at some point with a new slate for a new board. But it's not true that we don't have a board. It just really didn't function well. And there weren't any complaints since I believe, I won't say complaints, any issues raised to the county board since like early 2018. Is that right? We just went over that, Mr. Moore. I'm looking at Ryan, but.
County Administrator.
It's been a while.
My recollection is that the la, the most recent time that the Ethics Board met was about the time I started here. So that would have been April of 2018.
Thank you Supervisor. Does that conclude your remarks on this resolution?
Thank you.
Other discussion regarding this resolution? Supervisor McDevit?
No, just very briefly, the, we can find our current Ethics Board members just in a matter of minutes, okay? One is a neighbor of mine, Dr. Tedesco, lives one street over from me, readily available. See him out walking periodically. A retired, another retired physician, a physician, Dr. Morrissey, readily available. Both, both gentlemen, getting old as we're all getting. But these people are readily accessible, available. Dr. Tedesco was Chairman of the Ethics Board for a number of years at. for a number of years at Clonswalts Hospital. So I've heard it said that these people are not available. Not, not true. They're readily available.
Other comments regarding this resolution? Supervisor Thomas?
Yes, I, I would just like to say this policy is only as good as it's complied with. I know when I was chairman of the board, I got a report from the county attorney several times of members of this board that didn't even bother to fill it out. So if you don't fill it out, if you don't comply with it, you know, what difference does it make? So what, so what are you making a big deal about it? You know, it's, it's only as good as it's enforced and as good as it's complied with, period.
Thank you. Any additional, Administrator Moore?
Yeah, I, I appreciate differences of opinion on it. I really do. And I respect where everybody's coming from on the issue. Where I, where I'm coming from on it is, I, I, I think what the intent here is to try to improve the, the way our ethics board works, to try to actually have an ethics board that's, that's more relevant to what we do here with, that, that does meet. I believe one of the changes that's been made in the ethics code is to require the board to meet twice a year. Is that correct? I believe, I believe that's what we say. And we're, we're expecting the ethics board to get involved in giving us advice as to changes that ought to be made in the ethics code to make it more relevant to what we do here. And the changes to the disclosure form, again, in my eyes, the, the, the reason to do that is to make the disclosure form tie back in a more meaningful way to the conduct that's expected of all of us under the ethics code. So that you don't have a situation where people are sitting down and saying, what the heck is this question all about? This is ridiculous. It's nobody's business. We want a situation where you're looking at the ethics disclosure form and saying, I understand why I need to disclose this because this is the conduct that's expected of me in the ethics code. So that's, that's the intent of what we're trying to do here. And in terms of the current members of the ethics board, we have reached out to, to all of them. Mr. Lehman has done that for me to see if anybody has a desire to continue to serve. And we've also reached out to employees and members of the public and other municipal officials, because those are the three categories of membership on the newly constructed ethics board under this code. It's, we need a member and an alternate from the public, a member and an alternate from county employee workforce, and a member and an alternate from another municipality. So we have cast that net, and we do have a lot of qualified individuals who are interested in serving and interested in being a part of something that is a little more relevant to what we do day to day. The ethics code requires that this board be appointed within 60 days of passage. Provided this resolution passes today, today is passage. So within 60 days, the intention would be to have names for this board to approve as members of the ethics board.
Thank you. Further comments regarding Resolution 317? Supervisor Wilde, I'll, I'll get back to you after everyone following our rules.
Thank you.
Supervisor Garrity, I don't believe you've been heard on this yet.
I guess in reference to what Supervisor Thomas brought up. So if people ignore the ethics form, is that an ethics violation? We would never know that, right? Nobody will ever know that?
Well, that's the idea in having a more active ethics board, is that would be a matter for the ethics board to decide.
Okay. So that would be after the fact, after somebody made a complaint?
Right. Yeah. And one of the things that we're explicitly charging the ethics board with doing is reviewing all of those submissions that, that have a due date.
So good idea, because if people ignore it, are they unethical, the people who didn't fill it out, right?
Thank you. Other comments regarding those? I, I'll have to come back to you Supervisor Breimer, if you've been heard on this. Anyone else who hasn't been heard yet? I haven't been heard, and I just quickly want to say that we, this board approved this ethics policy a few months ago, and it does in fact have those changes of that proactive approach to having members review of the Board of Ethics, not the Board of Supervisors, and work collaboratively with our county attorney's office and with this board. It's quite extensive, and I cannot thank our community enough. We've had well over a dozen individuals send in emails with their resumes asking to be considered to be appointed to this board. And so I'm sure we've all look forward to some time being spent here, well spent interviewing candidates and talking with them about appointment by this board for that committee. Supervisor Wilde?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll be brief. I just wanted to share with the public, and I'm sure the board has probably heard this before from their own personal standpoint. But I received a call from the county attorney's office a number of months ago alerting me that my financial disclosure form was foiled. And I'm going, okay. And the next question was, what would you like redacted? And it caught me as a huge surprise that I'm filling out a form for the public to make sure I don't have a conflict of interest and I can choose what I want shown and what I don't want shown. I obviously said, don't redact a thing. But that's what got me started on this. And what's the sense of having a financial disclosure form if no one looks at it? No one can see it. That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Breimer. I had you next.
Thank you. I agree with Supervisor Wilde that it's pretty silly that our old policy or practice was to simply take those forms and keep them in their sealed envelopes and throw them away into a filing cabinet in the county attorney's office, and no one ever looked at them. One of the changes that we made and passed earlier this year was to make it so that those filings are reviewed by the Board of Ethics. So now we will have someone who's looking at them, someone from the public, people who will look at them and say, you know, are there any concerns here? And it's not to catch anyone. It's to say, hey, listen, you might have a conflict. You've got to keep an eye out for this. If there's a resolution on such and such, you need to recuse yourself. Or, you know, they would advise us as to that. And I want to also point out that we also made a change about late filings or people who don't fill them out at all. It will be followed up on by the Board of Ethics with the assistance of the county attorney's office. That's something we added. And then after 90 days, notifications of missing filings will be sent to the county administrator as well as members of the Board of Supervisors. And that never happened in the past. I wouldn't know if I, you know, if someone else on the board didn't file theirs, or, you know, no one would know if I didn't file mine, which I have every time. But now hopefully we will know that and we'll have to hold each other accountable. Thank you.
Are there any other comments on this resolution before I close discussion on it? Hearing none, we'll close discussion on that. Supervisor Conover, you were up next, sir?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I would like to comment on Resolution 350. You know, this was discussed at length in committee, and, and I know, I'll repeat myself, I know there are those that have one set of ideas on what should happen with that property, and there are others that have other ideas. And at some point in time, this board will have to make a determination as to whether those, which one of those ideas we support or do not support, or something else. The, the, at this moment in time, though, if we're going out to bid on this property, if what I, the question that I raised in committee was, well, what about the environmental issues associated with the property? And there was sense of discussion, and it was mentioned that, well, we did receive a, a letter from DEC, and I, and I'm not saying anybody represented the letter this way, but, but members could have come away believing that DEC has given the all clear relative to this property. And, and I'd like to thank Lexi because Lexi sent me a correspondence, the actual correspondence that, that, and I'm not going to bore you with the whole correspondence. You can, you can get it, obtain it and read it yourself. But I just want to quickly recite, it says, it says, however, the only contaminant of concern that exceeded applicable standards was 1, comma, 2, comma, 4, trimethylbenzene in both soil and groundwater. And then it goes on to say, based upon to obtain the data, no further explanation or remediation required. As it anticipated that the contaminated soil could be encountered during future redevelopment of the property. In the event that the contaminated soil, and it goes on to say, well, then of course, there's going to have to be follow-on to remediate any issues associated with all of this, if you start digging on the property. And so at this moment in time, having this resolution in front of us, or I should say to the board at the committee meeting, what I said to, what I asked was that our attorney take a look at the liabilities that might be associated with our selling this property and going out to bid. And basically, my concern broke into two camps. The first camp had to do with a full disclosure within the bidding process to prospective bidders that, at least this letter exists, and that perhaps in the bidding notice, it provides some place in the bidding to international where you can do that kind of thing, where people that are bidding on this on standard, there may, or the word may, may be environmental issues and, and, and that might have remediated at some type of extent. And, and so that would be something that I think we should evaluate. And the second thing, concern breaks into two parts, which is if, in fact, we do get a bid on the property and we do sell the property, what, what assurances are we providing as, as, as part of the title trail relative to this? There was some discussion, we absolutely aren't going to be providing anybody any kind of indemnification that apparently a long time ago was provided relative to another piece of property that, that we actually acquired. The, so, so the, these types of legal concerns, I thought, you know, you really needed to be evaluated and fleshed out before we act on this resolution. I suppose if we can provide complete transparency and full disclosure within the bidding process without any guarantee that we're in fact going to sell the property, in other words, that we're, we're, we're just, I mean, I, I mean, one would think that if we're going out to bid, we have intention to want to sell the property. And otherwise, why are we going out to bid? And so unless and until these resolutions, these issues get resolved, I think that we, I have very difficult time with this resolution. And because we are part of the title trail, we know in DEC's own correspondence that there are environmental issues remaining with the property that may, or the word may, have to be remediated. We don't know at this point to what extent. It supposedly depends on what you're doing with the property. And, and we have no idea what the cost would be. And more importantly, we don't know, a bidder won't know, will they? So, and are they going to give us a bid contingent on satisfying all the environmental concerns? Are we going to work ourselves into a situation where we basically repainted ourselves into a corner? Here's my concern in this regard. So, so at this stage, you know, I, it came out of committee, and I'm not looking to set this aside to a certain date because I think that out of respect to the people that have moved it to this point in time. But I would ask this supervisor that have moved it to this point in time, that I think that waiting a little longer until the county attorney address these concerns is the prudent thing to do. And that would be my recommendation to those of you that are actively involved in, in this matter. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion regarding 350 Supervisor McGowan?
Thank you. You know, during committee, I, I did, I did agree with Supervisor Conover. He makes a really good point. I did, you know, read the report and, you know, being in the construction and the, the business most of my life there. You know, that, it is questionable, you know, and like he was Supervisor Conover, spot on. We, we do have some obligation there. In, in my opinion, the smallest amount, because our, you know, our, our title that we have owned that property is, is probably the least amount. You know, we've, we haven't even owned it a year yet. And we've done nothing but clean up that property to the point where we could get it sellable. Holding this up, you know, I, I would like to see the, the proper wording, and I would, I would reach out to our attorney to, to see if we can't put a little heat under the fire on this one there so we can get a, you know, an answer before the sale. But from what I have read, the contamination, the tritochloride, which is basically a gasoline base, could be a solvent. Who knows? Back then, it could have been an old, you know, it was a crossing on a road. It could have been a, you know, a railroad station, but, you know, and the historian, who knows what was there? But something is, and it's only in really three areas, two, two areas, and really, and really just on the front along the road, I think was the, was the highest level. It wasn't enough to do anything unless we put a shovel in it. I, I feel comfortable moving forward as long as in the bidding process, we, we make it known to anybody it's bidding and have that report readily available to anybody that would like to bid it, so they can read it. You know, like I said, I have read it and, and I feel comfortable with it. But I will, you know, that's just my opinion and, and I will, and I respect Supervisor Conover. I think he's spot on on, on what he's saying. So, you know, whatever the, the board feels we should, should do, I, I will agree. So thank you.
Thank you. I had Supervisor Garrity, then Supervisor Dickinson, and then County Administrator Moore, I think.
Well, having dealt with brownfields before, I guess I'm curious what the letter says. You know, I haven't been there to read the letter. And then certainly I would ask the county attorney to opine on this, whether we should move ahead with the, with the sale. And I hopefully that he was brought into the discussion. Because usually on brownfields, you get, you get the okay, or at least we did from DEC. Of course, it was paid for by the Brownfield Fund, and then they, they signed off on the two properties before we took ownership. And I would, I thought that what we were doing with this property, maybe I'm confused about it. But certainly I would want the county attorney to read through all the paperwork and say, yes, I'm okay with you selling it.
I believe it not only is Lexi well versed in it and here to speak on it as well, but our county attorney and our county administrator will both would like to be heard. I don't want to jump ahead of Supervisor Dickinson. Do you want to make a comment before I ask all of them to weigh in?
Thank you, Chairwoman. No, I was more interested in having Lexi respond. So.
Thank you Supervisor Dickinson. Lexi, would you mind taking the podium?
I just forwarded the email over to Sam and asked her if she could print a couple of these so that a couple of you can have the letters if you would like. I, I mean, I understand Supervisor Conover's concerns. And just to clarify, it was 1, 2, 4, trimethylbenzene was the chemical that we're talking about, not chloride or chlorate or.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to clarify that. And it was in both the soil and the groundwater. However, when we had this testing done, we shared this information. I did, I was in complete contact with DEC, Russell Hike, who is now retired, but was out of the Raybrook office. And he had told me at the time when he got this, and he was the one who had this Nicole Hines send us the letter. He had told me that he would drink that water from the ground. That he said that he was not really concerned with these levels that were found. But that is what he told me. He was willing at that time to have come to committee meetings, but that never happened. And it does say that it is anticipated that contaminated soil could be encountered during the future redevelopment of the site. And in the event that the contaminated soil is removed during redevelopment, you know, say they put in a water line or a sewer line or a new foundation, the removed material would need to properly be disposed of. But that's only if they find this. I mean, this, these levels have dissipated over time because the property has sat for years and years. It's been, I'd say, what, 20, 25 years since they've operated out of that business? You know, so I mean, I've given all this information to Robert as well. Robert and I have had a couple of discussions. I know he was going to further look into this. But I think it really does come down to, you know, how DEC feels about it because they are the environmental people that have given us this letter. They said that no further remediation was needed at the time when they gave us this letter. So, I mean, there wasn't really anything else that we could do to go forward. We did everything that we could. We've done every test that we could there, and then went further and had the lead and asbestos done before we took the building down. All that's left now is just the concrete slab. So I don't know. I mean, my feelings is, is that I think we would be okay going forward with the sale. But that I have all the reports in my office, and I'm willing to share them with anybody that, you know, I'm authorized to share them with. So. So, if that can be put out there that, at the time of sale, then we could include that information if needed.
Thank you. Are there questions for Lexi? Supervisor Bramer, then Supervisor Conover?
I had a comment too, but I guess I'll just keep it to a question for now, if that's where you're looking. Lexi, are those, do you consider those public documents, or you need some sort of board authorization to be able to release them?
Somebody, I think, would have to give authorization, because it was something that the county paid for to have all that testing done. It's not my call to make the decision to share those reports. I think it has to come from above me. This letter from D E C, I don't see why that couldn't be shared. But again, I don't think it's my call.
May I ask the county attorney to address that issue? Supervisor Bramer?
Mm-hmm.
I don't want to take away from your time talking, but Supervisor, sorry, county attorney to.
We'd look into it. I mean, definitely, it's, they're foilable documents because they're government documents. And you can look and see if you want to see what would be disclosable and not, what could or should not be redacted. I mean, if, like the December 3, 2018 letter, I mean, that letter is, that one we talked about, that is definitely, again, like other government records, it is definitely foilable, and I don't see anything in there that would be some reason to have to conceal it or redact anything from that, that letter itself. And it, that letter is actually not a bad letter in terms of pollution and contamination on the property that way, I don't think. I have done some research on it. I mean, I can kind of preliminarily report on it now. I'm still examining a couple of issues in terms of common law lawsuits for pollution and contamination on property. That's something different and beyond what there is bond or federal or state law. There are some protections under state law from, we could obtain a formal certificate of completion from the D E C. There's a process to apply for it, and if you're granted it, that limits your liability, protects you from the state, the D E C, coming after you for contamination on that property. There's also under the federal super fund law, the CIRCLA Comprehensive Environmental Response Compensation and Liability Act, that one, there is an exemption for municipalities that obtain the property through tax delinquency, like we did in a tax foreclosure, obtain the property that way. You're not considered an owner or an operator of the property, so you don't fit under the definition of the kinds of people or entities that would be subject to liability for contaminating the property, either because they did something that polluted it, they ran a facility that polluted it, or anything like that. If the county didn't do anything actively, then they're not considered an owner or operator under the federal law that way. I'm still looking at the common law and equitable causes of action. That's the gray area where there's room for litigation. There are defenses in that as well, based on the circumstances of it. That's one I'm still looking into before I could sit here and give you a 100% assurance on anything.
County attorney, it would be helpful, I think, to be able to send those documents out to our board members if we haven't seen them already. I know the request, and it's being passed around, but it should be emailed. Okay, I see a lot of hands. I want to go back, because I did cut off Supervisor Bramer during her question, and then Supervisor Conover had a question, then I saw Supervisor Driscoll, I assume, for question, Alexa? Okay. And whose other hand did I hear? Just Supervisor Diamond right after that. So, Supervisor Bramer.
I'll try to be really quick, because I know a lot of people have comments, but I understand Supervisor Conover's concerns, I really do, and I think that we're already in the chain of title, and so getting us out of the chain of title as quickly as possible would be more advantageous for the county than just continuing to own this piece of property. And like Robert just said, we have not contributed to any of the contamination. Obviously, we have very detailed records about exactly what we did there, and we, if anything, have cleaned up the property more. So I, you know, I feel comfortable with us moving forward to sell, and I also feel comfortable with us sharing not only that letter from D E C, but the reports that we have. They're public, to me, that, to me, just not from a legal standpoint, but just from equity standpoint, the buyers or the bidders should have access to that information that we've already collected. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Conover?
Yeah, I mean, putting aside, I mean, Lexi, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, what the D E C letter says is that the property right now, as is where is with a concrete slab, they don't see any need for any further action. But then what they do say is, if you start developing the property, you start digging on the property, that's, that could be, I'm not saying it is, and before I use the word "may," it could be a horse with a different color. And so they're, they're, they're holding that in reserve because they don't know, because, well, we have done some borings and whatever, until you start digging and whatever. And let me say this, on the first part, because of the two-part concern that I have, and that is, there are people that purchase property that have possible issues. They're experienced at that. They're experienced with remediating those issues. They're experienced at, their program is not one where there's high risk to people on the property, whatever that program might be. But they have to be aware, if they're bidding, I mean, people need to be aware that there's a history here, that they're, et cetera. And so it would seem to me that, and especially because if we're going to be paying international fee, whether we sell it or not, that it would seem to me that we want to provide full transparency and full disclosure relative to any and all documents associated with this, with this property. That was my primary concern with going out to bid. Selling it, I mean, it would seem to me, I would want to hear a complete answer from our county attorney at the time, and I'm sure that will be forthcoming at the time. But I think anyone's bidding on this property, really? I mean, I think we have an obligation to put everything out there, and so they're completely aware of what they're engaged in. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Driscoll?
Thank you, Chairwoman. I appreciate the informative perspectives, but unless I maybe didn't hear anything, has anyone offered this as a roll call vote yet, or?
No, that request has not been made. Would you like to make it a roll call?
I would, I would prefer that one of the, my colleagues who have commented, make that rather than myself.
Okay. I'll wait till such time that I ask for roll call, or someone offers that up prior to. Supervisor Diamond, then Supervisor Garrity?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to comment on this discussion that's going on. In the city of Glensville, a few years back, we experienced similar activities with a Mullen property. So, there was a phase one done, phase two done. Actually, the phase one was paid for by the private sector, individuals interested in the property. But in full disclosure, during the sale of the property, we made the phase one and phase two reports available. So my suggestion is that if we have any interested candidates who want to buy it, show them, allow them to, take a look at the phase one and the phase two report, and see if they want to continue with the acquisition. I know that D E C classifies properties depending on a choose, and when they classify the properties, it's based on, you know, contaminated soil. As Lexi spoke, if the property at 50 Cooper Street was to be developed or the land disturbed, that property would have, that land would have had to be excavated away, taken away, disposed of, brought in new soils. So those are things that come up in the reports, depending on the particular use. I don't see any harm at all if we have an interested candidate and share news through reports. We did it in the city, and it helped us, you know, with the sale of property. I just wanted to add that.
Excellent. Thank you. Supervisor Garrity, then Supervisor McGowan?
Well, just one letter was written December 3, 2018. That's the one from D E C that says, only contaminative concern was the tri benzene in the soil and groundwater, but based on the information obtained to date, no further investigation or remediation is required. That was done in December 3, 2018, and then on January 30 of 2019, which is two years ago, they closed the case. So I don't know if there's a concern at all with selling a property, or at least putting it up for bid. I mean, and then since this letter was written January 30, 2019, we tore down the building. And the only thing they ever said, if you dig in the ground and you discover a little bit of contamination, you'd have to dispose of it. I mean, that's two years ago, where here's, here's the proof right here in the footage. I'm comfortable with them doing it, as long as Robert's comfortable in saying, yeah, go ahead. I can't see where we would be responsible for that.
Supervisor, thank you. Supervisor McGowan?
Thank you. I, as on Supervisor Driscoll's recommendation, I will bring forward, let's put this as a roll call, if that's all right, Chairwoman.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Please let the record reflect, resolution 350 will now be a roll call. Supervisor Wild, then Supervisor.
Madam Chair, thank you.
Yes, of course. No, Supervisor Wild, then Supervisor Thomas.
Thank you. A couple of years ago, we sold some property that was contaminated down in the southern part of the, southern part of the county, that was contaminated, and we knew about it, and the buyer knew about it. But we went through months of trying to understand what our liability was. We didn't create the environmental issue, we didn't mitigate the environmental issue, but because we were title holders, there were things in that that made us concerned and pause. So my suggestion to the board is, is that we wait a month. Allow our attorney to come back to us to understand exactly what potential liability we have before we commit to spending money, whether we sell it or not, by the way, because we are going to be committing money to provide this auction house. Let's wait and understand what those liabilities are before we move forward. To me, it doesn't make sense. I don't see any reason for the urgency today, and I don't see any issue with delaying for 30 days. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Thomas, then Supervisor Shupler?
Yes, just briefly, I think we would be negligent if we didn't release all the information that we have about this property. I mean, we're not trying to hide anything, are we?
Supervisor Thomas, I, I don't know if any of the resolutions need to be amended to release that information. It was my understanding it would be released. I don't, okay, I just want to make sure there's no action needed by the board to make sure it's released, and it sounds like there is not. Supervisor Shupler?
Thank you, Madam. I'm in agreeance with both Supervisor Wild and Supervisor Thomas. I see no reason for the urgency of this being passed today, and I would like to make the recommendation that perhaps we table it for a month until the county's attorney can get back to us with a response and a determination if we should go forward at that point in time or not with the sale.
So we have a motion on the table to lay this on the table until next month, and refer back to committee Supervisor Shupler, or refer back to this full board?
I would like it to go back to the full board, and I'd like the appropriate responses at that point in time to be made by the county attorney and the reports, the determination if the reports need to be, how we need to handle the reports going forward.
So there's a motion on the floor to lay this on the table for one month, to come back before this board with the directive to the county attorney regarding a report and releasing information to be shared with the board. Do we have a second to this motion? We have a second to the motion by Supervisor Wild. At this point in time, there is discussion on this motion. So we are only discussing the motion to refer back to this board in one month. So let's take the hands, as I see them, which is Supervisor Driscoll, Supervisor Dickinson, then Supervisor Wild, Supervisor Driscoll.
I just wanted to be, thank you, Chairwoman. I just wanted to be clear to Supervisor Shupler's motion, it's going to come to the full board next month, but that, does that prohibit us from also discussing it at the Tuesday, August 24, Environmental Concerns and Real Property Tax Services Committee meeting?
Supervisor Driscoll, I don't think that would defer any conversation or prevent conversation.
We just won't be acting on that particular.
Right. This would be referred back to this full board.
But we can still discuss it as we receive information.
That would be my understanding, unless I'm the county administrator, county attorney, or the parliamentarian?
No. I believe as long as the committee chair is willing to indulge a conversation, the committee chair controls the floor, and the committee chair, it would, you know, have the ability to allow the committee to discuss anything. Great. Thanks.
Does that answer your question? And with that answer comes Supervisor Dickinson.
Are you sure about that?
It's your show, sir.
Lexi, do you have any issues with this? Are we, any timeframes?
I just want to put back out there, as Robert stated, that this was taken through a foreclosure proceeding. The Perkins property that Supervisor Wild is discussing was not taken through a foreclosure proceeding. We went through and did every test that was known for us to do on this Mullen's property. Not one test was done on the Perkins property. I never had anything to do with that property. It was nothing that was foreclosed on. I'm not even sure exactly how the county acquired that property, through a purchase, but it was a private purchase. So that's why things had to have been done differently for that property than this one. Robert did state just a bit ago that it's a little bit different when you foreclose on something when it comes to the chain of title. So I think if Robert's granted a little more time, then I guess that that'll work, and maybe he can give you guys the answers or decisions that need to be made. I just know that we've done every test possible on this property, and when I have somebody from D E C tell me that they would be willing to drink that water, I don't feel like the concern is truly there. He felt that these levels, yes, they were elevated, but that they were low enough to move forward with it, you know? So I'm, I'm just telling you what I was told by him. That's what he did day in and day out through D E C. And Kevin does have the paperwork. There was the spill report that I also included in the email to Supervisor Conover, and D E C has closed the spill on that. They're saying that if something else is fine, found, then a new spill report would have to be open. But that would be anywhere. That would be the same thing on your property. If you happen to dig into the ground and find a tank or find dirty dirt, you're going to have to open a spill on your own property. So, I mean, it doesn't make this property any different than any other.
Thank you, Lexi. Again, please make sure your questions are as it relates to the motion to lay on the table for next month. First, the motion in front of us, Supervisor Wild, then Supervisor Garrity, then Supervisor Beatty, then Supervisor Bramer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I may make a motion to change this, but the question that I have is related to our county attorney's office, and if they feel that they can get their conclusions drawn and provide it to us at least one week before the next board meeting, and after that, then based on that answer, I may wish to modify.
Okay, allow that. County Attorney Trilliger?
Yes, I can definitely have an answer for the board one week before the next board meeting. Next board meeting would be September 2017, so one week before that, Friday before that. Yes?
Thank you.
Provided that answer, are you looking to modify?
I'm not looking to modify. Thank you.
Supervisor Garrity was next.
No, I was just going to suggest that, and I'm sure that Robert will do this, is just take this letter dated 1/30/2019 and just reconfirm it with D E C. That's all I was going to say. You got it here, just reconfirm it, because it's 2021.
Supervisor Bramer, you're after. Supervisor Beatty? Supervisor Beatty?
Yeah, I do, I just like to recap in my mind. So the D E C has signed off, said it's okay, very cool. All the tests have been performed by the county, very cool, blah, blah, blah. It's not like the Perkins site, it's totally apples and oranges, as we all know. So, you know, I don't have a problem waiting a month. If we, if we need Mr. Collier to say that too, basically, he said that now, but if he needs to say it again, so be it. I mean, the world's not going to end, I guess, in a month. But I, I think, I think, you know, it's good to be cautious. I'm very cautious, as you can tell by different things in the past that cost this county taxpayer millions of dollars. But this is one time where the D E C has signed off, every test has been done by our Lexi, and they've all passed in flying colors. Yet we're sitting here debating it again and again and again, but that's all right. I'll wait a month. That was the board wants to do.
Again, the debate on the floor is referring a month back to the board supervisors, Supervisor Bramer.
Thanks. You know, I would appreciate having Robert's opinion.
Thanks. You know, I would appreciate having Robert's opinion. I think if he can get it before the next board meeting, that's fine. I don't see the need for waiting a month just to put it out for auction, though. We still need to go through a whole separate process to accept a bid. So I'd still like to move forward with at least authorizing this to go forward and then get Robert's opinion by the next time. And also, you know, it was kind of implied like we're rushing. And I know that we've heard, we've done all the tests that are available. I'd like to hear from our county treasurer as to how long he's dealt with this piece of property. Because I certainly do not think we have rushed. We have... This has gone on for decades, and it's time. I mean, I guess if people want to wait another month.
As we're talking about the... I'm sorry. As we're talking about the delay for another month in terms of the resolution in front of us, I think your request is reasonable. Treasurer Swan, would you please step to the podium and answer Supervisor Bremer's question?
I first started dealing with this property in, it was April of 1980, 1995. It was the first time that I had a conversation with the owner about the back taxes and the problems with the property.
Does that answer your question, Supervisor Bremer?
I remember it very well.
Thank you, treasurer. Supervisor Conover, then we have county administrator Moore.
Yeah, I mean, as I recall, at least in more recent history, this went on at length for some time. There were those of us that wanted to support the demolition on the property, and there were those that had other ideas. And that consumed a significant amount of time. But that's what happens in the public process. The only thing, a comment I would make, and this would be more directed at Lexi and the county administrator, is that when you report back, because we can't answer that question today, is within the international bidding process, what opportunities do they provide for us to do a full disclosure? I would assume there's a narration, some verbiage perhaps that we have to provide. And it would be good to have all of that, know what we're going to say within that to make sure that Mr. Twilligers and you, Lexi, are satisfied with the script as to what the full disclosure is going to be. So I would just add that to the idea of what we're waiting for.
I would agree with Supervisor Diamond completely. I think we should provide any and all information that we have. We should list it. If anybody's interested in it, here it is.
County Administrator.
Thank you. On the Sebagagi property, just to follow up on Lexi, it was a different scenario. And I believe, if memory serves, that when the county purchased that property, the county indemnified the prior owner. That's been the treasurer shaking his head, yes. So it was a very different scenario. But there are two issues that I perceive we're dealing with here. One issue is disclosure to potential bidders. And the second issue is we need a solid legal understanding of what the county's liability might be in the future if an owner is developing this parcel. Now, how those two issues stack up on the timeline that we're dealing with? We're not authorizing the sale of this property today. What we're authorizing, and there's two resolutions. One resolution says that we have a couple of options as to how this parcel might end up. We could sell it. We could keep it as a parking lot for the bike path. Or there could even be other alternatives in there that we're not even speaking to. But we're acknowledging that there are a couple of different ending statuses for this parcel. That's Resolution 316. And the second one is authorizing the auction company to go forward with an auction. What we're doing there is just testing the waters to get a sense of whether there's a market for this property. Now, what do we need to have in place out of our two concerns in order to have the auction company move forward? I think is the disclosure. We need to agree that it's in the county's interest and in potential buyers' interests to have all the information upfront. And I think we could all agree that that's what everybody in this room wants to do. We can agree to that today. And the second piece, in terms of understanding the county's liability, if we do transfer the property, in my mind, we can have that on the timetable of... Because again, if we do decide to sell this property, it's going to have to come back to this board at a future board meeting date. And I am confident that Robert will have that analysis done by that date.
So provided, the information just provided to us by the county administrator. And again, as it relates to the motion in front of us to lay on the table for one month, I have two comments. One, I'd like to just take an informal poll of the board right now. Does anyone object to us releasing all information to any potential buyers and documents that we have? If anyone objects, the sense I'm getting is that we all clearly would let answer your first question. Very good. The second point I just want to make, while I certainly respected the motion that's on the table by Supervisor Shepler and Supervisor Wild, it is to address the sale versus the resolution that's in front of us to vote on today is to start the process to put it up for auction. And I would just please ask that this is something, as our treasurer has noted, and our department heads, has been discussed for a very long time now. And I would respectfully, I will not be supporting this motion to adjourn it for a month, but will be supporting to get it onto the auction, to start the process, and ask that this information be provided well ahead of time to this board. And I'm hopeful that will come out immediately from our county attorney in whatever capacity this either passes or does not pass by. Is there any more discussion regarding the motion in front of us to lay on the table? Otherwise, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote to this motion to lay on the table, which will proceed. This trumps all of the other motions in front of us right now. So it looks like we have two, Supervisor Wild and Supervisor Conover.
Madam Chair, just so the board understands, we're committing $2,000 even though we may not go through with the auction. A minimum of $2,000. Thank you.
Can I?
Supervisor Conover, then Supervisor Hogan. And I'm sorry, I did not see Lexi. If you don't object, Supervisor Conover, may I? Lexi.
Okay. The resolution is only allowing this $2,000 to even be transferred if you decide to reject the bid. If the county accepts the bid for sale, the auction company will be paid through a 6% buyer's premium at no cost to the county. That $2,000 we agreed in committee was not going to be moved until a later date, until we know what the board's decision is. So when this auction company puts it out for sale, I then bring the bids back to committee. And if the committee chooses to forward it onto the board to accept the bid, then the county would not be out any money if we decide to accept the bid. If we choose to reject the bid, is the only time that then the $2,000 would be moved over. And then we'd have to pay the auction company for all of their advertising and all of their work that they put into this auction.
Thank you.
I just wanted to...
No, I appreciate that. This is very complicated, and it was in committee as well. We've spent a lot of time on this issue. I know it's very confusing. Supervisor Conover.
Thank you. I don't think, I think the motion makes all kinds of sense. I don't think we should be out fishing. I mean, that's what's being suggested here, that we go fishing for a bidder that we may or may not give a word to at some point in time. I think that when government, especially governmental entities decide to go up the bid, it means that they have intention to sell. And then when you have that kind of process, you have serious people that approach you. But if you're out just fishing and you have no intention perhaps of even selling the property, you know, there's something about that that strikes me as wrong, just wrong. And I think that the motion to lay it aside for 30 days makes sense. We're not judging it. We're giving the staff time to come back and say the affirmative things that I think we all want to hear, both in terms of the auctions international and what we can and can't do, and also the other. So while I appreciate the idea of that there's two issues and that they're separate, the backdrop of all of this is that we're a governmental entity and we're putting something out to bid for sale. And I think that that is something we should do in a serious way because we're looking for serious people, because the minimum amount that's been established is a serious amount of money. So it's just, I don't see where we gain anything moving forward with something that, quite frankly, is kind of capricious, really. Thank you.
Supervisor Dickinson, then Supervisor Hogan.
The serious problem is your use of fishing. We're not fishing here. We have a piece of property that we've been unable to put a number on as to its value. We've been all over the board. We've talked to assessors. We've talked to realtors. There's nobody that can put their number down on paper, say, your property is worth this much. Some of them are really high, some of them are really low. So the decision was made to put it out in an auction and see what kind of monies it did generate. If it generates the kind of money we think it's worth, we're going to sell it. If it does not, then that gives us an opportunity to renegotiate with Queensberry. Queensberry is interested in this property. Warren County has put a lot of money into this property. If Queensberry is interested in doing something, we need to know what we spent on this property and what its potential value is. And that's all we're doing here. We're not fishing. We're trying to find out what the value is. And if somebody comes in and offers us what we think is the value or more, we're going to sell it. And if we don't, it should give us some indication of what it's worth. And then we can proceed with Queensberry or whoever else is interested in it and know what we have invested in it and what it's potentially worth.
Supervisor Hogan.
Thank you. I, for one, will not support the motion to table. I do support the very serious deliberation and recommendation that came out of the committee. And I do support all the work that's already been put into this by Lexi, by Robert. And I think that we should all be very, very cautious when we call committee deliberations and recommendations less than serious.
Supervisor Shepler.
Thank you. Why have the realtors not been able to put a dollar and cent amount on the property?
If you don't mind, what I'd like to do is to ask Supervisor Dickinson to address your question. If he'd like to ask staff to do that, please feel free.
We've asked a number of them, and some of them come in high and some of them come in low. It depends on what they perceive with this property. Some of them feel it has a lot of potential and value, and some of them don't. It's just a personal thing, but we can't get any consistency in what they feel the value is. So the best place to do that's in the marketplace.
Does that answer?
It does, but it doesn't. Are the realtors aware of these reports too?
Supervisor Dickinson or Administrator Moore, I know you were jumping in there, so I'm not sure if it was to also answer the question.
But I can't speak to that particular question about the realtors, but I just wanted to offer the perspective that in my mind, the thing that's closest to this is when we were thinking about selling the railroad. And we don't know what the railroad's worth until you put out an RFP and you get a sense from the private sector purchasers as to what they would pay for it. It's the same scenario. And that's in a situation like this, that's the only way you can do it.
Thank you. Supervisor Conover, I will get back to you. At this point, we've had so many comments, repeated comments. I really think we're going to need to call the vote here on whether we're going to table this or not. Supervisor Driscoll, I have not heard from you on this. Without objection, let's let this be the final.
Very quickly, yes. Members of the public who have spoken to me have told me that they prefer that I support the proposal that members of the town of Queensberry had put forward. But listening to Supervisor Dickinson, I also believe that, you know, let's see what happens. So let's put it out there. I'm a folk personally that eventually, I think it's better for the town of Queensberry to develop that property. But I want to... Yeah, but I want the process to go forward, so.
Thank you, Supervisor. Let's call the roll call.
No, you said without objection. I do object.
I'm sorry.
The debate.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Point of order. I'm sorry, Supervisor Bremer has a floor and a point of order. State your point.
Supervisor Conover was not called upon to speak, and you had already closed the session on this to call the roll call. Thank you.
Point of order.
Point of order. I had my hand in the air to be recognized.
Supervisor Conover, I've decided on the point of order. We're going to move forward with a roll call vote until such time that that is appealed.
Oh, no, then I make a motion that we appeal your ruling. And this applies to every supervisor in this room on any issue. That the discussion, to curtail the discussion, no one needs to get out of here faster than I do.
Supervisor Conover, your point has been able to take a roll call vote on the appeal.
I challenge the ruling.
Sarah, please add the roll call vote on the appeal of the decision on the point of order. What you all are voting on right now is whether or not you support the decision that we've had discussion, the point of order by Supervisor Bremer, and to move forward with a roll call vote. That is the vote before you today, according to Robert's rules.
Excuse me. A yes would be a vote to appeal the chair's decision, and a no would be a vote to affirm the chair's decision.
Correct. Thank you. Sarah. Yes, a yes is to... Will you please restate that?
Yes, a yes vote is to appeal the chair's decision to close debate, and a no vote is to affirm the chair's decision to close debate.
Thank you.
Supervisor Wild.
I hate stopping the debate.
Yes, yes or no, Supervisor Wild. We're abstaining.
I think I'm going to say yes because I want to continue the debate.
Thank you, Supervisor Wild.
Supervisor McGowan.
No. No.
Supervisor Beatty, no. Supervisor Thomas.
No.
Supervisor Shepler.
Yes.
Supervisor Garrity.
Say that one more time.
County Administrator.
A yes is to continue debate. A no is to discontinue debate.
Yes.
Supervisor Conover.
Yes, for public discourse.
Supervisor Leggett. Supervisor Diamond.
No.
Supervisor McDevitt.
Yes.
Supervisor Bremer.
No.
Supervisor Bruno.
No.
Supervisor Driscoll.
Yes.
Supervisor Frazier.
No.
Supervisor Smith. Supervisor Hogan.
No.
Supervisor Dickinson.
The theater emphatic, yes.
Chairwoman Seber.
No.
Motion fails. With a vote of 404 affirmative and 460 negative and 136 F.
So you call the vote now on the motion to table?
Yes, sir. Sarah.
Supervisor Wild.
Yes, for a 30-day delay, just to make sure that I'm saying the right thing. Thank you.
Supervisor McGowan.
No.
Supervisor Beatty.
No.
Supervisor Thomas.
No.
Supervisor Shepler.
Yes.
Supervisor Garrity.
No.
Supervisor Conover.
Yes.
Supervisor Leggett. Supervisor Diamond.
Yes.
Supervisor McDevitt.
Yes.
Supervisor Bremer.
No.
Supervisor Bruno.
No.
Supervisor Driscoll.
Yes.
Supervisor Frazier.
No.
Supervisor Smith.
No.
Supervisor Hogan. Supervisor Dickinson.
No.
Chairwoman Seber.
No.
The motion fails with 276 votes in affirmative and 588 in negative.
Thank you. Are there discussions on other resolutions before us today? Hearing none. Any other requests for roll calls? Thank you. Can we please proceed to the voting on resolutions before us today, Sarah?
Resolution 299, making supplemental appropriations. Supervisor Wild.
Yes.
Supervisor McGowan.
Yes.
Supervisor Beatty.
Yes.
Supervisor Thomas.
Yes.
Supervisor Shepler.
Yes.
Supervisor Garrity.
Yes.
Supervisor Conover.
Yes.
Supervisor Leggett.
Yes.
Supervisor Diamond.
Yes.
Supervisor McDevitt.
Yes.
Supervisor Bremer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bruno.
Yes.
Supervisor Driscoll.
Yes.
Supervisor Frazier.
Yes.
Supervisor Smith.
Yes.
Supervisor Hogan.
Yes.
Supervisor Dickinson.
Yes.
Chairwoman Seber.
Yes.
Resolution number 300, amend Warren County budget for 2021 for various departments within Warren County. Supervisor Wild.
Yes.
Supervisor McGowan.
Yes.
Supervisor Beatty. Supervisor Thomas.
Yes.
Supervisor Shepler.
Yes.
Supervisor Garrity.
Yes.
Supervisor Conover.
Yes.
Supervisor Leggett.
Yes.
Supervisor Diamond.
Yes.
Supervisor McDevitt.
Yes.
Supervisor Bremer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bruno.
Yes.
Supervisor Driscoll.
Yes.
Supervisor Frazier.
Yes.
Supervisor Smith.
Yes.
Supervisor Hogan.
Yes.
Supervisor Dickinson.
Yes.
Chairwoman Seber.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution number three seventeen. Um Ethics Financial Disclosure Form Review Enacting Local Law Number Six of twenty twenty one entitled The Local Law Amending and Updating Local Law Number Five of twenty twenty one. A local law amending and updating local law number six of twenty fourteen, Warren County Ethics and Disclosure Law. Supervisor Wild?
No.
Supervisor McGowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Beatty?
Yes.
Supervisor Thomas?
Yes.
Supervisor Shubler?
Yes.
Supervisor Garrity?
Yes.
Supervisor Conover?
Yes.
Supervisor Leggett?
Yes.
Supervisor Diamond?
Yes.
Supervisor McDevitt?
Yes, yes.
Supervisor Bremer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bruno?
Yes.
Supervisor Driscoll?
Yes.
Supervisor Fraser?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Hogan?
Yeah.
Supervisor Dickinson?
That'd be an emphatic no.
And Chairwoman Seber?
Emphatic, yes.
Super um resolution number three thirty five. Um amending table of organization and Warren County Salary and Compensation Plan for twenty twenty one. Supervisor Wild?
Yes.
Supervisor McGowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Beatty?
Yes.
Supervisor Thomas?
Yes.
Supervisor Shubler?
Yes.
Supervisor Garrity?
Yes.
Supervisor Conover?
Yes.
Supervisor Leggett?
Yes.
Supervisor Diamond?
Yes.
Supervisor McDevitt?
Yes.
Supervisor Bremer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bruno?
Yes.
Supervisor Driscoll?
Yes.
Supervisor Fraser?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Hogan?
Yes.
Supervisor Dickinson?
Yes.
Chairwoman Seber?
Yes.
Resolution three forty four. Increasing capital project number eight three thirty three eighty five, county route thirty two over Benny Brook Culvert replacement, authorizing transfer of funds and amending Warren County budget for twenty twenty one. Supervisor Wild?
Yes.
Supervisor McGowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Beatty?
Yes.
Supervisor Thomas?
Yes.
Supervisor Shubler?
Yes.
Supervisor Garrity?
Yes.
Supervisor Conover?
Yes.
Supervisor Leggett?
Yes.
Supervisor Diamond?
Yes.
Supervisor McDevitt?
Yes.
Supervisor Bremer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bruno?
Yes.
Supervisor Driscoll?
Yes.
Supervisor Fraser?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Hogan?
Yes.
Supervisor Dickinson?
Yes.
Chairwoman Seber?
Yes.
Resolution number three forty seven. Making supplemental appropriations. Supervisor Wild?
Yes.
Supervisor McGowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Beatty?
Yes.
Supervisor Thomas?
Yes.
Supervisor Shubler?
Yes.
Supervisor Garrity?
Yes.
Supervisor Conover?
Yes.
Supervisor Leggett?
Yes.
Supervisor Diamond?
Yes.
Supervisor McDevitt?
Yes.
Supervisor Bremer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bruno?
Yes.
Supervisor Driscoll?
Yes.
Supervisor Fraser?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Hogan?
Yes.
Supervisor Dickinson?
Yes.
Chairwoman Seber?
Yes.
Resolution three forty eight. Making supplemental appropriations. Supervisor Wild?
No.
Supervisor McGowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Beatty?
Yes.
Supervisor Thomas?
Yes.
Supervisor Shubler?
No.
Supervisor Garrity?
Yes.
Supervisor Conover?
No.
Supervisor Leggett?
Yes.
Supervisor Diamond?
Yes.
Supervisor McDevitt?
No.
Supervisor Bremer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bruno?
Yes.
Supervisor Driscoll?
Yes.
Supervisor Fraser?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Hogan?
Yes.
Supervisor Dickinson?
Yes.
Chairwoman Seber?
Yes.
Resolution three forty nine. Authorizing payment of back wages, less taxes and other lawful deductions to a Warren County employee. Supervisor Wild?
Yes.
Supervisor McGowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Beatty?
Yes.
Supervisor Thomas?
Yes.
Supervisor Shubler?
Yes.
Supervisor Garrity?
Abstaining.
Supervisor Conover?
Yes.
Supervisor Leggett?
Yes.
Supervisor Diamond?
Yes.
Supervisor McDevitt?
Yes.
Supervisor Bremer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bruno?
Yes.
Supervisor Driscoll?
Yes.
Supervisor Fraser?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Hogan?
Yes.
Supervisor Dickinson?
No.
And Chairwoman Seber?
Yes.
Resolution number three fifty. Authorizing agreement with Auctions International Inc. for professional auctioneer and broker to conduct online public auction for town of Queensbury tax map parcel number three oh two dot eight dash one dash two two seventy five Bay Road. Supervisor Wild?
No.
Supervisor McGowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Beatty?
Yes.
Supervisor Thomas?
Yes.
Supervisor Shubler?
No.
Supervisor Garrity?
Yes.
Supervisor Conover?
No.
Supervisor Leggett?
Yes.
Supervisor Diamond?
Yes.
Supervisor McDevitt?
No.
Supervisor Bremer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bruno?
Yes.
Supervisor Driscoll?
Yes.
Supervisor Fraser?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Hogan?
Yes.
Supervisor Dickinson?
Yes.
Chairwoman Seber?
Yes.
Resolution three fifty one. Authorizing the appropriation of funds from the general fund unappropriated surplus to the airport budget, amending twenty twenty one Warren County budget and authorizing payment to Forest Enterprises Management Inc. Supervisor Wild?
No.
Supervisor McGowan?
No.
Supervisor Beatty?
No.
Supervisor Thomas?
Yes.
Supervisor Shubler?
Yes.
Supervisor Garrity?
Yes.
Supervisor Conover?
Yes.
Supervisor Leggett?
Yes.
Supervisor Diamond?
Yes.
Supervisor McDevitt?
Yes.
Supervisor Bremer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bruno?
No.
Supervisor Driscoll?
Yes.
Supervisor Fraser?
Yes.
Supervisor Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Hogan?
Yes.
Supervisor Dickinson?
No.
Chairwoman Seber?
No.
The resolution fails. With a vote of four hundred and forty one affirmative and four hundred and twenty three um in the negative and one hundred thirty six absent. And I'll just see the collective on the rest.
May I have a collective on the rest of the resolutions before you today, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you, that carries. The next item on our agenda before us today um is privilege of the floor and public comment at this point in time. Um, I would ask if there are any comments from our public has been patiently waiting. I'll go to the public first and then we'll come back to supervisors for any privilege of the floor. Yes, please reach the podium and state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Seber, County Administrator Moore, Warren County Supervisors, members of the public. My name is Brett McDevitt. I'm a resident of Warren County, a homeowner and a taxpayer. Member of the Queensbury Zoning Board of Appeals, a business owner in Warren County and a candidate in this November's election for the Board of Supervisors. It's a pleasure to be with you this morning and I thank you for the opportunity to speak. Over the last few weeks, I've heard some comments from some individuals in our county as well as a neighbor of mine that I find very concerning, why I'm here today. The allegation that I have heard is that email accounts of Warren County officers and employees are being monitored by certain elected individuals here today. First allegation I heard is that the email of former county attorney Mary Cassane was being monitored. This apparently occurred in mid-February. Included in Ms. Cassane's emails were confidential case files of juvenile delinquency cases and assisted outpatient treatment matters. Court ordered treatment including medications for individuals with severe mental illness. Apparently Attorney Cassane blew the whistle to some supervisors seated here today. When she told them she was aware this was allegedly occurring in an email to some supervisors with pages of email documentation. Attorney Cassane says she felt threatened, harassed and disrespected by certain individuals. In addition, Attorney Cassane indicated having access to her email is a constitutional violation of these respondents. Question to Chairwoman Seber and the board. Was this a constitutional violation of these individuals? Do the associated judges in these matters, namely Judges Wilson in Kersko in family court, as well as Judge Smith in Warren County Surrogate Court, know that certain proceedings they had in their respective courts had emails which are alleged to have been monitored by certain individuals here today? Elected officials have no standing in any way, shape or form to read, monitor or access these highly confidential matters. Additionally, are the defense attorneys who represented these individuals aware that this may have occurred and their clients' rights may have been violated? If this is true, does it open up the county to potential exposure or potential litigation from these defense attorneys representing clients whose rights may have been violated? Abraham Lincoln once said, "Don't interfere with anything in the Constitution. That must be maintained for it's the only safeguard of our liberties." Apparently other department heads have expressed their view that they feel threatened and are concerned regarding what one individual called quote spying. Another individual says they became aware of the email spying several months ago and asked county IT Director Michael Colvin if this happened and how it happened. Based upon this information, I think it would make sense to involve IT Director Colvin for an accounting of these claims. I've heard that since January fifty or so, employees have left Warren County as they felt micromanaged and that this email matter is one of the reasons. Many employees feel over the last several months, what was once a great work environment has unfortunately turned into a toxic work environment. This is sad to hear. One of my neighbors whose daughter works here at Warren County, Warren County recently said to me when I was out walking my dog Finn that never in the history of this county's Board of Supervisors has partisan politics been so pronounced and evident, including the exercise of political vendettas. Reporting to retired Lieutenant General Walt Omer Jr., former president and CEO of the Center for Creative Leadership, toxic leaders are quote individuals whose behavior appears driven by self-centered careerism at the expense of their subordinates in unit and whose style is characterized by abusive dictator behavior that promotes an unhealthy organizational climate, end quote. The question that I have, and this is course, of course, is a yes or a no question to Chairwoman Seber. Are or were the email accounts of Warren County employees being monitored by you or anyone else to your knowledge? Elected officials in this room should not be accessing any Warren County employees' emails. As elected officials, stick to kissing babies, go into pig roast and doing the people's work. If this is in fact true, I find it nothing short of alarming. I believe an independent committee should be put in place to study this matter. I encourage the board to act quickly on this. And I believe the independent investigation which I reference should be conducted by the New York State Police. The investigation should interview IT Director Colvin, former county attorney Mary Cassane, any Warren County supervisors who have been alleged to have been part of this or any Warren County supervisors who may have knowledge of this from Mr. Colvin or others. I thank you for your time this morning, this afternoon.
Mr. McDevitt, thank you for your time here today. Those are very serious allegations and certainly should be looked into. At this point in time, I would open up the floor for privilege of the floor. Supervisor Conover?
Yeah, for those supervisors that may not have been in attendance at the um executive committee meeting, I announced that I had sent um my ideas to the county administrator as to uh a process, a a a procedure whereby uh that I don't think presently exists for um the um how how we as an entity access records. And I encourage all the supervisors that may have ideas in this regard to provide those ideas to the county administrator. I I think this is the age of the internet. This is the, we need to have good, solid practice policies in place that not only protect our employees, that protect information, protect the uh protected information information, um, which, which frankly, not, uh, if somebody that doesn't know may not even be aware of that it's protected, right? Not that much you're aware of it. So, I provided, I think, a nine or ten points to the county administrators, what I felt would be some ideas as to who the gatekeeper should be, and how the checks and balances should be in place, and how the, uh, and that everything should be in writing, et cetera, and I would encourage, once again, all the supervisors that have an interest in this subject, and I think we all should have an interest in the subject to do the same.
Privilege of the floor, Supervisor Bramer, then Supervisor Hogan?
Thank you, yes, those are definitely serious allegations. I, um, I am personnel chair, I have not been approached by any supervisors recently or months ago about concerns related to the release of medical or legal information held by the county. However, as most people know, I was concerned about our prior county attorney's loyalty to the county and to individual supervisors. I was elected to protect and support the county, and I will not sit by and hold, not hold employees accountable for any kind of misconduct they may have had with respect to emails or county computer software information. When Ms. Cassane resigned, I did continue to have concerns about her loyalty, and there were other concerns brought to me by supervisors that she may take or release confidential county information and or resources before she left. As many of you know, in the private sector, when you resign, you are sometimes asked to immediately pack up your things and leave, you are not continued to give, be given access to information, especially when you are in a high-level sensitive position. I understand that this does take place even in the municipal sector, such as in Glens Falls. We did not do that here in Warren County, and I was worried. Upon further information, it was confirmed, I'm sorry, investigation, it was confirmed that Ms. Cassane had released confidential county information to private third-party email addresses. One of the confidential pieces of information was about a former Board of Supervisors member, someone who is not on this board any longer, and I don't understand what her purpose was for sending that information out from the county, but it was deeply troubling to me. Using county email and confidential information for improper purposes and sharing it outside the county is against county policy, and it is similar to the kind of behavior that resulted in an employee from the county law department being fired earlier, um, a few years ago. I did not seek to have Ms. Cassane immediately removed, um, because of her time at the county was coming to a conclusion, perhaps I made a mistake in not taking further disciplinary action as the personnel chair, or more precautionary measures prior to her departure, I did not want to escalate the situation, and I was hopeful that there would not be any further disclosures of confidential information in the short amount of time that she had left here. To be frank, I'm not sure the extent of the information that she may have released, so perhaps we could investigate that now, but I don't know what the purpose of that would be now that she's no longer an employee. If anyone has suggestions to that, I am certainly having open ears about that, and we can talk about that further in the Personnel Committee. Thank you.
Supervisor Hogan?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. An important piece of business that we got done here today that hasn't received any recognition at all is our proclamation that August twenty-sixth is equality, Women's Equality Day. As you know, it's something very important to me, and it should be something very important to all of you. As I look around this room, I don't see enough female faces. I see, I see more than were in the past, but I don't see enough. So on August twenty-sixth, I just wanted to invite all of you to take a moment and really think about what you personally have done to advance equity and voices being heard around the county, and maybe identify just one single thing that you can do in the future to help amplify a voice that isn't heard. Thank you.
Yep. Other privilege of the floor, Supervisor Conover, I'll come back to you as soon as everyone else has had an opportunity. Supervisor Thomas?
Yes, I would like to amplify that, uh, on August twenty-third was the date that I have been given for months now, that the tower and the equipment behind the Stone Creek Town Hall would be operative, and, uh, I just wanted to bring that forward as, uh, August twenty-third is Monday, and, uh, want to get it out there in public again that this needs to be done, our first responders, their pagers don't, don't work, they're unable to, to get the signal, and I thought this was going to be taken care of, but August twenty-third.
Uh, Supervisor Thomas, that's an incredibly important point, we've talked about this for many months, and I know the county administrator would like to, to respond, and, and we want to support those efforts. Yes, Supervisor Thomas?
Yeah, so, uh, the, the administrator did contact Public Service Commission, and they did get back to us, so, uh, there has been some, uh, communication with Verizon, and I did notice, I think it was last week, a couple of Verizon trucks down here on the corner, but on, like, on Glen Road there, and, uh, so hopefully, you know.
Thank, thank you, we're all.
But I want to thank the administrator for doing it.
If you're okay, Kevin, I'll have Supervisor Garrity, County Administrator.
I was just going to remark that I saw they're either taking a road test or they're working here.
A road test or working, okay.
We did contact the Public Service Commission to get in touch with Verizon, we also threw, through Sam, Sam Parker, our, our hero from this morning, it's been one of the many issues he's helped us on, he got in touch with Verizon as well through the governor's office, and the last feedback I had from the Public Service Commission is that, that, that they would be good by that August twenty-third deadline, but thank you Supervisor Thomas for the reminder, and I will reach out again to them this afternoon and just put it on their radar that August twenty-third is Monday. Or Tuesday is the case may be. Today's the twentieth, right?
Oh, well, Tuesday.
Yes, Tuesday. Uh, Supervisor Garrity?
On my way in, I did see three Verizon trucks parked in the, uh, or EMV parking lot, so they either they're taking a road test, or they may be working on the campus somewhere.
Thank you. Other privilege of the floor, Supervisor Driscoll?
It is Monday, I can't count.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Like the rest of us, I, I read the, the daily COVID reports, uh, and I think Warren County is, is light years ahead of, of, uh, New York State counties, uh, in getting that information out to the public. Unfortunately, uh, later this afternoon, uh, we will be reporting, uh, to the media, uh, another fatality because of COVID. Uh, I live with, um, uh, an employee of, of Public Health, Public Health Services, um, I'm bombarded with that information. If there's a special event, uh, a, uh, I'm generally at it, albeit the Big Brothers Big Sisters event later today, uh, I encourage people to, uh, you know, to support those fundraisers and, and activities in all of our communities, but I also encourage people to be smart, safe, and continue to, uh, share with information with, uh, your constituents, with your friends, colleagues, about the importance of getting vaccinated. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor. Anyone, Supervisor, um, Conover?
Uh, yeah, I'm not going to comment on Supervisor Bramer's, um, statement, confession, whatever you want to call it, as far as I'm concerned, uh, it is what it is. Uh, but going forward, I think that we absolutely, absolutely need to have some rules to the road as to how records are accessed, who accesses those records, for what reasons, what due process is followed. Otherwise, it opens it up to enormous potential, uh, problems, politicization, maybe even liability, I don't know. Uh, so in the absence of there being rules, uh, I think that, uh, we really need to think as a body politic, we need to think, uh, clearly and seriously on this issue, and, and once again, what I would suggest is that we provide our, our, our comments to the county administrator, or that he can collect all of them, and perhaps we can hammer out something here that, uh, provides some, um, some construct relative to how this is done. I mean, for example, what I suggested was that the county administrator be the gatekeeper, that the county administrator make a determination of cause, that the county administrator would have to communicate such a, a review, uh, to the IT department, everything had to be in writing. County IT department has to respond back in writing, if there's any question on legality or protective materials, they should ask for a determination from the county attorney, um, that, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that, that there needs to be some formal process as to how this type of thing is done. I don't think any one supervisor or any two or three supervisors should take it upon themselves to just rifle through somebody's, or go through somebody's emails, uh, and Mary Cassane was a public officer after all, but nevertheless, there are no rules, so in the absence of rules, what I'm suggesting is that we create the rules. What rules do we follow to do these types of reviews, investigations? I mean, you can put the name on it that you want, and I know this is a very uncomfortable subject, and I don't like it any more than anyone else, but I think it's something that we as a body, we really need to deal with. Thank you.
County Administrator Moore?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and yes, Supervisor Conover, I believe this came up, it was a Government Ops Committee towards the end of the Executive Committee, and the point is, the point is well taken, uh, if we do want to amend our existing policy to, uh, put in some rules to the road as, as you state, uh, the policy would be our computer policy. The computer policy does speak to the fact that, uh, county records, including email records, are public records and are property of the county, and there's no expectation of privacy, and there's a, there's a, uh, section that all of you have signed, certainly you have county email addresses that acknowledges that there's no expectation to, to privacy. That is the policy that we would be amending. I will send all of you that policy so that you can review it, and you can provide me with your, um, ideas and your comments, and, uh, we will need to incorporate all of those suggestions, we will need to also cross-reference with state law, because there are portions of state law that speak to the right of certain, uh, county officials, including the chair of the board, to inspect records, it's, I believe, county law four fifty, but I'm pulling that out of the back of my head, so we will have to cross-reference this with state law and make sure that we are under the umbrella of state law and that we're compliant with state law if we, if we make the changes that are suggested. So, um, let's, uh, all take a stab at that and bring it back to committee when we're comfortable with what we have.
You're hearing, are there any other announcements? Without that, perhaps we could have a motion to adjourn today's meeting?
So moved.
I see that is moved by Supervisor Dickinson and seconded by Supervisor McGowan, all in.
The following program is underwritten by the generous support of Associates of Glens Falls and Lumis and LaPan Insurance. Since eighteen fifty-two, they have been assisting both businesses and individuals across the country secure the most comprehensive insurance products available. Associates of Glens Falls is proud to partner with central insurance companies. Public Affairs programming on Look TV is underwritten by the generous support of Pennell's Restaurant, classic Italian-American food since nineteen twenty-two, and StorTech, technology solutions for computers, networks, and phone. StorTech, your technology, our passion.
Nineteen twenty-two, Babe Ruth debuts with the Yankees, WGY signs on air, Exterminator wins the Saratoga Cup, and Pennell's Restaurant opens its doors for the very first time. For five generations, Pennell's has been preparing delicious Italian food, served in a comfortable home-like setting where everyone is welcome. Ninety years of authentic Italian recipes, ninety years of the freshest ingredients, and ninety years of the finest classic Italian dishes, all made daily by hand. Pennell's Italian Restaurant, a Saratoga dining tradition since nineteen twenty-two.
Most cybersecurity firms deal only with prevention, the systems that block hackers and viruses. StorTech knows the root cause is actually good people doing bad things, so we offer a security training program which includes certifying all participants to show they understand the basics.
Technology solutions for computers, networks, and phones. StorTech, your technology, our passion.